Our boys in need of.
Oh, no. No, it was. Yeah, they were just piled up right here like I don't need four pens. So I just passed them out.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, October the seventh, twenty twenty-four at seven oh two P. M. Ms. Derry, would you call the row, please?
Certainly. A C Brown.
Here.
Ralph Meeker.
Here.
Tim Terry.
Here.
Roger Mainwater.
Yeah, here.
Steve Tedford is absent. Rod Powell.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please stand, we'll begin our meeting tonight with our prayer led by Nick Coleman from Free Will Baptist, followed by our Pledge of Allegiance from Chief Brad.
Let's pray together. God, we are thankful for another day, thankful for the blessings that you have given to us of life and of health, the blessing of your son, Jesus, who you sent to die on the cross for our sins. Well, we're thankful for the sacrifice that he made for us, and we pray, Lord, that we would lean into that tonight, that we would accept that gift. Lord, I pray tonight for these leaders that sit in front of me. What I pray that you'd give them wisdom as they make decisions for our community, and that, Lord, that we as a community would rally behind these leaders and be a help and a support to them. And so, Lord, may you go with us tonight. May you bless the time that we have here together in Jesus' name, and amen.
Amen.
allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Maybe see it. I haven't done this in a while. I want to thank Brother Nick tonight, along with the other pastors that come to City Hall. I think you guys come by about once a month or two months or something like that and pray for anybody at City Hall that wants prayer. And we gather here in the council room, and we appreciate that very much. Thank you. Next on the agenda is approval of minutes for the September ninth, twenty twenty-four regular city council meeting. If you've had a chance to take a look at that councilman, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Thank you. Have a motion in a second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Meeker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Mainwater.
Yes.
Ms. Powell.
Yes.
Thank you. Recognitions and acknowledgements. We don't have anything official, I don't think, tonight, other than just to recognize folks that are here. Thank you for being here and your concern for the city. We just appreciate how things are going. I think everything's going well, so we appreciate that. Committee reports, Boys and Girls Club, I didn't get a chance to really look at these hard today, tell me if we were missing one. And if you don't have it in your packet or on your on your tablet, we'll get that. Let myself or Danielle know, and we'll get those updated. Parks Committee, Joel, did you, Mr. Joel, did you want to? Okay. Citizen Forum, I did not get the clipboard. Would someone, Hunter, would you check and see if that's, or Greg or somebody? I don't know that there's a signature, but I don't want to miss out or leave somebody out. I do? Okay. Thank you, sir. Okay, thank you. So we do have one signature or one sign up tonight. It's not rules. It is rules, I guess. So you have, I'll call, it's Mr. Christian Jones. If you want to come up, state your name, address, and then you have five minutes to discuss with council.
One one tonight, no pressure.
Nah.
My name's Christian Jones, thirty-nine hundred Antler Drive. Mayor Kinslow, council, thank you for letting me talk tonight. So for those who don't know, I am running for city council. Mr. Meeker is is my opponent. Before anyone, you know, starts holding their breath, trying to come up here and calm things down a little bit. So I rehearsed this a little bit, kind of came in about six minutes. So hopefully maybe give me a little extra time, but I'll try to hurry.
You're wasting time, kidding.
There's, there's, there's three things I really want to discuss tonight. So the first thing is why, or some ways I may be unqualified for city council. Second thing I want to talk about is why Mr. Meeker is qualified for city council. And then the last thing is, is I owe Mr. Meeker an apology for something that happened. I'll get into that in just a moment. I know that's a little unusual. So to kind of explain, you know, I'm not running because I have big political aspirations for myself, or because someone wanted me to. In fact, most people are very confused as to why I would want to. So I think that's, that's kind of interesting. But I'm running because I really love this community. You know, it did a lot for me growing up. And this is just kind of my way, my opportunity to give back. And so with that being said, you know, I just want to do what's, what's best for Greenwood. And, you know, whether the voters think that's me, or Mr. Meeker, you know, I want them to be as well informed as possible to choose who they think is best for Greenwood. And so that's why I'm going to kind of be open about things that maybe I'm lacking in, some things that I think Mr. Meeker has strengths in. I just think it's good for everyone to to kind of have that. And if you want to know more about me and why I am qualified, you can go, there's a Facebook page, Christian Jones for Greenwood City Council, got my website on there as well, so you can check that out. But tonight, and this is not as bad as it looks, very big font, so I don't miss something. But to just kind of talk about why I would maybe be a little underqualified, I would be the youngest, I assume, the youngest council member. You know, I'm only thirty years old, and I know for some people, that's, that's young to be doing this. You know, I think it provides me with a different perspective, but I also realize that that some people kind of see that as a lack of experience. So I understand that. And to kind of go along with that, you know, another kind of shortcoming I have is I'm not going to be as experienced as the other council members. You guys obviously are already all up there. You've been doing this. I haven't. You know, I come to the meetings, I try to pay attention, you know, keep up with what's going on. But there's a difference between spectating and participating. And so I realize that. And so to to kind of move along here, you know, now I want to talk about what what I think makes Ralph qualified. Ralph loves Greenwood. I guarantee he loves Greenwood as much as I do. I know that he is a Cub Scout and Boy Scout leader, if I'm not mistaken. You know, my grandpa was. And so I've seen firsthand the effort and the time and the dedication that goes into that. And I'm thankful for anybody who wants to do that. You know, that's a leader of our next generation. And I think that says a lot about a person. You know, some of my fondest memories are Cub Scout events with my grandpa. And so I just appreciate someone who's willing to do that. You know, he's got his bachelor's and master's degree, just like I do. That that takes a lot of time, a lot of effort. He's obviously very intelligent. You know, as I mentioned earlier, I'm a little on the younger side. Ralph, Ralph did mention that he graduated high school before I was born. So those are his words, not mine. I wouldn't just come throw that out. And so, you know, he, and an exact quote from Ralph here was, you know, that some decisions have to be made based on not education or professional experience, but quote, good old common sense from life experiences. And I agree with that. And obviously, he has a little bit more life experience than I do. So, you know, that's important. And I do, I believe that Ralph is an honest person, a good person who truly cares about Greenwood. So, you know, I'm not going to come up here and tell you that you should vote for me because Ralph, you know, isn't a good choice, or he's a bad person, right? Because none of that's true. I'm coming up here because I love Greenwood. I want the opportunity to serve. If you think that I am what's best for Greenwood, I certainly appreciate that vote. If you think it's Ralph, that's fine, too. If he wins, I will gladly shake his hand and congratulate him. Obviously, I hope I win. I would not be standing here. Last thing I want to say is, is I need to apologize to Ralph. There was an emergency called meeting back in August to waive some permit fees. We had some storm damage, some fences. About half the council showed up. I was frustrated, made a post on my campaign page, and I said, you know, vote for me, this won't happen. And what I meant was, generally speaking, I will show up to that stuff. In my frustration, I did not see that what I did was I implied that Ralph wasn't there, and he was there. And Ralph, I appreciate that. And so I just want to correct that. That post has been taken down. I did, you know, I mentioned in the comments, I actually named who was here and who wasn't. And I didn't list Ralph because he was here. And so I just want to make that right. I do apologize. You were here, and I don't want to imply that you weren't. So but that's, that's it for me. Again, you know, if you want to vote for me, I certainly appreciate that. But at the end of the day, I just want what's best for our town. So Ralph, no ill will toward you. Obviously, I respect you a lot. And I thank you guys for letting me come speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Appreciate it.
Hey, I would just say, I appreciate Mr. Jones getting up and doing that. That takes a lot of integrity to do that. And I, I accept Mr. Jones's apology. And that's a good reason why you don't get on Facebook. But, but Mr. Jones and I are both Bulldogs, and we both want to win. We both want to represent Greenwood the best we can. And I appreciate that. And I just want to say good luck.
Also, your speech was five minutes and fifteen seconds.
Yep.
So you're good.
So next time you get four forty-five. Thank you. Anybody else want to say anything or address Mr. Jones? Thank you. Did you want to speak, sir? I didn't, if you, you can, I'm on, because you weren't, I don't know if you were here a while ago. If you, you can come up and state your name and address, and you'd have five minutes.
My name is Drake Brandon. I'm from Greenwood. I'm an Eagle Scout, and my address is ninety-eight oh six Willowbrook Loop, Fort Smith, Arkansas.
What's the address again? I'm sorry.
Ninety-eight oh six Willowbrook Loop.
Okay. Okay.
My reason for being here tonight is an Eagle Scout project was destroyed several months ago over where the new Mercy Center is going. Along that trail, there was trees planted.
A tree?
Trees.
Okay.
I don't remember exactly how many, but that was a project for Tyler Cobble, and he couldn't make it here tonight.
Okay.
So don't really have a plan. I was just curious what the city would be willing to do to make it right.
Sure.
And help donate.
Yeah, I was not aware of this at all until just now. Though, so the trees were planted along the trail? Is this what, and I knew there were, there's park benches there, too. Was that part of that project, different project? That's right. Walmart donated. Okay, so trees that were planted near the trail were removed, I guess, because of the road.
Yeah.
Is that what you're saying? Do you know how many or anything?
If I had to guesstimate, probably about fifty to sixty. Not that many.
Okay. What, what, what troop?
Fifty-four.
Fifty-four?
Yes, sir.
Ralph, are you aware of the trees?
Yeah, I wasn't aware that they were, they were.
Or about the project.
Yeah.
So what I would ask is that we, either through Mr. Meeker, or if you could provide, or the scout himself could provide that very specific detail to us, I promise you, we'll put them back. I actually have some funds that I can use, and I label it trees every year because I'm kind of a tree guy myself. So, yes, sir. You have money? Yeah, we, we got funds to put these things back. So what I would like is to get, because I want to kind of follow exactly what the other, who's the other young man, right?
Yes.
Okay, whatever his project, whatever he did, whether they were maple oak or, or whatever, Rod, are you familiar?
I'm very familiar.
Were you there to plant or help?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay, I mean, I assume you were.
And the benches were donated by Walmart.
Yeah, that I remember.
Slabs were poured by his, his friend Tyler.
Slabs.
And there's the slabs.
For the benches. Oh, for the benches, yes, okay.
The benches were put in place by the scouts.
Okay.
And then he put in about fifteen trees.
Okay. We'll get them back. Absolutely.
It's part of that trail. They went from that neighborhood to Walmart.
Okay.
And then it was all just taken out.
Okay.
You know, Rod and I will be doing the tree giveaway at the Fall Fest, and there's, there's all, sometimes there's four, five, six left over. I mean, that may be a good opportunity to put those to use.
I guess.
Those, those.
I guess. Can you answer, can you talk?
Some of the branch that they were trying to fix, because as you know, that area was very wet. So they had to go through and do some things that they wanted to play. It's also working out of saving, I think, in that, so that can help those do some.
Yeah, we won't have any issues with covering, covering the cost of the trees to redo. And if, and if, if, what's the young man's that?
Tyler Cobble.
Okay, you got that down?
Tyler Cobble.
You'll have in a minute. So please get back to, go ahead.
That street department, yeah, he's also a troop fifty-four scout.
That's right. Yeah, this will happen. I can promise you. I really was not aware. I know there's a green space between the trail and the road, but I know I can't just stay in there when they're building a road. Sometimes they have to do excavate outside of that area. So I would, I would have been, I'm shocked that we took, I mean, I understand that they probably had to. Size wise, that would be a good thing to know. You guys are going to know. Everybody's going to know.
Well, they're, they're pretty large at this point. They're probably four inch caliber.
Okay.
So there was a plaque on one of the benches. Wouldn't mind having that plaque back, even though the project's destroyed.
The, the plaque's missing? We moved a bench also?
I, I don't know who we is, but the benches are gone.
Well, when I say we, the contractor.
Oh, the benches are gone.
What?
Is that what you said, Rod? The benches are gone?
Benches are gone, aren't they?
No. That I can vouch.
Still there. Just the trees.
Are you this young man's son dad, or? Okay. Yeah, benches are there. I saw them today or yesterday.
Okay.
Yeah. No, no.
The only other thing I ask is Tyler.
We'll let him plant them all, plant them all.
He doesn't get a second egg.
So is there, is it like? I'm sorry, that's all I know. Thank you. Thank you. We will rectify this. We will absolutely. So if you'll have him and you come to City Hall and get with me, and so we can get all the details, what size they need to be, what they were, I'm not, you know, we don't want to go in there, plant your favorite trees, the willow, I think.
Yeah, willow.
It was sarcasm.
Willow oak, yeah.
Yeah, willow oak. So we'll, we'll put back exactly what he did, and he can certainly be a part of it. Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Apologies for us. Us, it's our job. It's our project, even though it's a contractor. So take care of it. Thank you. Anybody else that didn't get to sign up that we destroyed, something that you did? Sorry. I hate that, but we'll, we'll, we'll take care of it. Mr. Tom Marsh is the one for the microphone. Financial report. Thank you for coming and asking. Appreciate it.
Okay, first, come over here. Got a new setup here. So the key financials for the city sales and use tax revenues, we have a cumulative growth twenty-four over twenty-three of three point nine two percent. It is inching upward. It was lower than it, than that was last time. I'll show you why. I'll do a deeper dive into that and the county sales tax. County is actually cumulative growth is not a growth. It's actually below what our last year's dollar amounts of revenue was by point four four percent. So our cumulative above budget is almost five percent down from our budget of four point five percent. County is lagging, and I'm going to do a real deep dive into that to show you why that's happening. As far as the advertising and promotion, there were some late payers that didn't come in until after the close of the month. So at the end of the month, and the report that you see in front of you was also given to the AP Commission, we ended up a cumulative growth in twenty-four so far through the first nine months of two point oh two percent. That's down two point nine eight. But like I said, there were some late payers, monies and revenues that came in over this last week. So those numbers are not factored in there. They should be somewhere right around their AP budgeted growth of just around five percent. That's where we're hoping the catch-ups that everybody done will continue to be on time pay through the rest of the year, and then we should end up fairly decent in the average. The late paying, though, does affect their ability to give out grants. And so there were some delays in some of the people that were coming in on the AMP Commission and asking for grants. So those late payers do have a ripple effect down the line. As far as the city sales and use taxes is concerned, the number I want to show you is up here at the top, September twenty-four over September twenty-three, we had an increase of six point eight two percent. Now, that's actually great growth for the city sales and use tax. That's indicative of the purchasing power in the city. You do see the three point five six percent is what we were at from January through August. January through September increased about a quarter percent with that six point eight two. So you see, it's, it's taking a large amount of a growth of month over same year month, month, a year, same year month. Your impacting is a quarter percent on six point eight two. So you're, we're still a little below our five point two is where we need to be by a little more than a percentage point. I really think that in the next few months, that's going to pan out to be better. This six point eight two percent, by the way, September's collections were, were July. So that we were looking at the Freedom Fest in July, we were looking at some of the revenues that came in, which was favorable to the city as far as our own taxes are concerned. As far as the county, you'll notice September twenty-fourth to September twenty-three was down three point two five percent. And that made us sink a little bit lower. If you'll notice, we were at this point last year, one point eight, one point nine eight three million. We're at one point nine seven four. So that's our decline. I really think that we'll end up just at or barely above flat for the year as far as county is concerned. Now, I'm going to do a deep dive into why that happened. And I, as I mentioned, I think I was asked at the last meeting to, why was this happening here? And I'm going to show you. The county sales tax distributions, as we've already gone over, is based on a per capita distribution, one hundred and twenty-seven thousand, seven ninety-nine is our census. Here's the census by. The county of Sebastian. In the county, and they're not affiliated with any. Spread and the dollar amounts that they get from. The amount that was distributable was three million, fifty-one thousand, two hundred dollars, and it was distributed based on these percentages. So we, in twenty twenty-three, had two hundred and twenty-seven thousand distributed in September. Again, that reflects July's purchases and July's sales. And then you look at September of twenty twenty-four, two hundred and nineteen thousand is our decline. That is down, everybody in this distribution is down three point two five percent because it's, it's the amount that we had as a deficit spread amongst all the cities. So everybody's percentage decline was three point two five. So let's go to the city sales and use tax and see what every city did. Now, in Barling, I, I put next to every city, Central City, Lavaca, and Sebastian County do not have, obviously the county doesn't, but they don't have city sales and use tax, Lavaca nor Central City. But every other city that's within the county of Sebastian, I put their city sales and use tax numbers. So what you're going to see is that there's a little bit of an anomaly here, a decline of about a hundred and seventy percent in Barling. And I did talk to the city manager there. And the reason was they had a trifecta of, of entities that ceased operations, one being CVS, not CVS, CVs, and the other being a furniture store and a convenience store, all closed at, at around that time. So that's where the decline comes in. Those numbers are no longer included. And they did say the grocery store did impact them because they were one of the largest revenue producers for that city. So that, that's an anomaly, but it does impact us. If you look at us, Greenwood, we're up six point three nine percent. You do see that Huntington was up, Mansfield was up, and Midland was up. But the ones that were down, Hackett, although they're not a large player in this as far as revenue stream is concerned and taxable sales, Fort Smith is. And Fort Smith's little bit of a decline still majorly impacts the county. This is a share, share one, share all. Everybody shares in the surpluses or the deficits equally based on their per capita distribution. So when you go down, that's a five point oh three percent decline in the city sales and use tax overall by all entities. We fared good, and the others three that are listed there also did. If you go city did have sales, it just wasn't a city sales. And these numbers are calculated based on the county's one percent. When you look at the September sales for twenty twenty-four, there was two hundred and ninety-five million dollars that were taxable sales for the year twenty twenty-four. But in twenty twenty-three, there were three hundred and five million. That is a nine point nine million dollar decline in taxable sales for all the cities and the county that make up Sebastian County. So that equates on a one percent basis to ninety-nine thousand, almost a hundred thousand dollars in distribution that's no longer available. And that loss is shared, is based on the percentage. Now, if we went back and said, oh, no, we should have the county, we did good, we should take this eleven thousand, five thirty, and we get that, and everybody else suffers. That's not how it works as far as the county is concerned. So all these that actually had profits, if one big, large city or one large city has a large significant material impact on their taxable sales, it affects all of us. Now, I'm going to share one little other point that I think is no longer little. It's worth looking at. The state collection distribution for county tax for September, which was July's numbers, six hundred and fifty-five million dollars. That's all county's taxable sales. September of twenty twenty-four was six hundred and sixty-five. Up one point five three percent. The county of Sebastian was down negative, or down three point two five percent. So Sebastian County didn't fare as well as other counties. Other large, probably Northwest Arkansas, Washington Benton, all of those basically fared a lot better. Little Rock probably fared better. We, I could go through and diagnose every single county and see who's up and who's down. But this, this is saying right now that the Sebastian County didn't fare very well, and that impacted us significantly. And then two other items that I wanted to talk about was our cash flow. Our month of September, we were down sixteen thousand, seven hundred ninety-seven. We do have a year-to-date increase of one point three five one million. Remember that the loan money for the splash pad is still affecting that as far as the cash is concerned, which affects our current balance. That seventeen million includes monies that are waiting to be spent and paid out in installment distributions to the contractor for the splash pad. So our percent increase right now through September was eight point three three percent. Realize that's supposed to be, if everything was spent like it was supposed to, going to plan and on time, given our capital expenditures, we would been somewhere in the neighborhood of down thirty, thirty-two percent, somewhere in there. So let's go to the capital expense, two point two four two million dollars has been spent so far year-to-date. That's through September on a budget of fifteen seven. If you take out the one point five million, which is a, a capital improvement project for the wastewater revision, we're somewhere either between the fourteen to seven, based on our budget number, or our revised budget number, we have spent fifteen point seven percent through nine months. And you're going to, in your packets, you have both the capital and the CIP reports are in there by department, by their projects. Have spent so far on those and what they have left to spend. Project and see what the status is of those projects.
Colin, where'd we end up last year, thirty-eight percent?
Forty-something, I think, right about forty percent. I would have been happy if we did, if we're, if we would spend at least fifty percent of our carryover, which is what I mentioned at the very beginning of the year. Because that means where some of these projects that are being pushed down, pushed, pushed on are being completed and wrapped up. Now, as you know, there's this theory, and it does seem to. The road, the more expensive things are getting just based on inflation. Speaking of inflation, I do want to go back here, and I want to talk about this nine point nine million dollars in reduction. That doesn't, that takes into consideration, if you think about, this could be worse, it is a little bit worse when you consider the fact that people are actually paying the two and a half percent or up, almost upwards towards three percent inflation on that. So you know, you're paying tax, pay for the goods. So we're down nine point nine million. That's incorporating the effect or the impact of inflation on there, which means people are buying less, but they're paying more. And that impact.
I think the economy is slowing down.
That's what I would deduce, yes. There seems to be a trend of a pullback.
One, that you're saying this month was an increase, though, you're saying that it looked like in your mind that is the last quarter of the year, is there a kind of a trend upward, you know, or?
No, not really, because the impact of Christmas doesn't happen until the beginning of the year. So remember, it's two months before we actually see the revenues from the collections, the distribution from the collections. So you're looking at Halloween, maybe come in October is December's collection. So you're looking at Halloween, maybe come in October is December's collections. I don't see anything that would say that that, that uh, trend for county is going to end up picking up anytime soon. But the good news is that the city sales and use tax, we're holding our own, we're actually kudos to the people that are buying local and supporting their local um, entities here.
Is a little food truck village helping that at all? Are you getting anything out of that?
That would probably be a good question for uh, Charlotte, cause she's the AMP finance director. You do, but uh, as far as what they're contributing, I don't, I, I didn't get down to the individual entity level. On very high level.
Yeah, I hope you heard her answer, she can speak for herself.
Go ahead.
Getting some, but not, it's not consistent.
The adjustment to the interest rates, recent interest rates, you don't think will have an effect before the end of the year?
It could spur some spending on the Christmas side for the people that are out there on Black Friday maybe. But um, again, that, that will come in late for us, not enough to significantly impact twenty four.
I was saying, one thing to our credit is that, I mean, we, we have, we have money because we're not finishing up projects and stuff, so we're, we're not going to be really uh, in a bind, but uh, as we push those projects later on into either twenty twenty five and stuff, it's probably going to be with more inflated dollars that uh, we're going to
Right, and I don't want to make it sound like these projects aren't getting done because they're not doing the projects. There's a lot of reasons why these projects aren't being done. The delays could be in contractors availability, could be in the engineering and what's on their plates. We do know that the federal government program that threw all this money out there to cities really just filled the plates of engineers who are now having to do these engineering projects. So there's a lot of reasons why. It's like the perfect storm as to why these projects are being delayed and kicked down the road. So they have addressed a little bit of that by moving out projects to other engineering firms and not locking in with one specific company. So um, yeah, they did realize that mayor has talked to them all about how to make these projects push a, push on a little bit quicker as we all know, the cost is going to go nothing but up. As far as the uh, interest rate drop, that does help us favorably when it comes to the cost of borrowing. So if, if and when we're ready to pull the trigger on any kind of water bond for water and sewer bond for uh, the capital projects that they have, that would be in excess of what's already in the bank. Uh, that's actually going to work to our favor, that along with our bond rating going up.
Tom, uh, Tim had that question about the food court and I don't know if his adequately answered it. We have a higher rate of delinquency in the food, in the food trucks than brick and mortar. So it, not all of them, but our delinquency rate is higher with the food trucks as of the meeting that we had uh, Tuesday of the previous week. So.
And I don't know if there is a, which I'm sure there is a little bit, you know, of uh, cannibalism, you know, that they're taking from, you know, the, the bricks and mortar stores as they, you know, being here, people uh, you know, as opposed to just bringing in necessarily new business or more business into town. And you know, that might be affecting a little bit of the AMP revenues too. And you could do a year, year over year comparison.
Yeah, I do that on the top, but let's say the top, I do top ten, but the top five contributors for AMP prepared food sales, they're holding their own. Yeah, they're, they're doing very well. So.
Well then, in your opinion, do, do we need to make any kind of uh, budget adjustments or do we need to talk to that, you know, when our, our last uh, financial get together?
I don't see right now anybody actually, and we'll have a budget study session to go over all of this, I think on the sixteenth, is that it? It's the Wednesday? Sixteenth of October, I think. She's just going to confirm. It's on our website.
Yeah, you may be able to, faster than me.
I think it's the sixteenth, it's a Wednesday and, and we'll go over all of that at that time. I don't want to take the time. Six p.m., on the sixteenth. I'll do a little more deep dive into every department.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Anything further for Tom? Yes, sir.
And not for Tom, but before you move forward.
I just say, I want to say I appreciate Tom kind of giving us a, an explanation, but you know, that it's not just a Greenwood thing, but it is a countywide thing, you know, and I appreciate that really deep dive and just to say, you know, the big picture, so we kind of have a better understanding of that. Thank you.
Before we move on, I, I was, I neglected that Drake Brandon that stood up and defended his friend.
Mm-hmm. Uh, future attorney?
His project was act, didn't think about it until somebody mentioned the tree giveaway. He started the tree, that was his project and he planted trees along the trail. So if you've ever walked along the trail and enjoyed more than Floyd Brown's moonscape that he did, uh, that he's, he's the reason why. And I appreciate him coming up here and defending his friend. And uh, but, and on that note, since there's people here, if, uh, I'll be hauling trees back for the tree giveaway and Ralph was assisting me. And if there's any special request, I've already got a couple of special requests from some churches to drop some off. Uh, just let me know, anybody that you run into, uh, unless they want to carry, go walk up to Bell Park and carry them back down out of Bell Park, so.
All right, thank you. Again, thank you. Okay, uh, next on the agenda is agenda additions and very proud of the department is this morning, they have seven, I'm kidding, there's none. You know, that brings always smiled everybody's face, so we didn't add anything. So we'll move on to old finish on business. Uh, number one is street resolution to utilize federal aid funds for streetscape. We've tabled this probably three times. I think we're, we're going to table it again, but I would ask the uh, yes, sir, if Tom, we, we provided, I think some of this to you earlier, but Elliot, uh, Bill, who's the engineer on this with Crafton Toll, I think this is a little bit different revised for you for what our unofficial plan is uh, to, to do, that's if you can't tell where that is, well, that's the square. It's the square, it's, and it's getting, getting squarer than it was uh, with some things. Yeah, right, what, couple of main thing, and again, this is all preliminary, very preliminary and it's, it's going to be due to a grant that we're pursuing uh, through tap and or streetscape itself. Right there is your chamber sign over there, uh, where he's about got his cursor. And we would extend, what's that called Jeff out front, the stripping? The hash marks out front, the thought is we would go over those hash marks, not just to be a place where people drive through and they shouldn't to, and landscape that. And they'll get a street view of it here in a minute, but then north of that, Tom, if you go back just for a second, just north of that, across that sidewalk, the other north left, sorry. To, right over there, but go back to the chamber sign. Now go straight up, straight up, right there, whoa, that area right there now is, is curved with the curb that we have now. Uh, the idea is to square that off and take those parking spates on the, on the west side of that square, uh, down, down. Now to your left, right there, uh, right there is a, is very hazardous. Uh, talked to the chief about it and all of us kind of agree that's a hazardous place to park, very seldom, you see anybody park there unless they're selling something. And my, my first reaction to Elliot was that we're going to lose the parking and we might not want to, plus more importantly for the Freedom Fest. Uh, but after talking to Elliot, there's an opportunity, what we could do is if we wanted to make that squared off and, and not have that parking, we could still make it available to the Freedom Fest vendors because you put, I don't know if y'all remember the uh, where the road paved road that goes up to the pavilion now in Bell Park, one time Michael Lejeune can put down a, a mesh that you can drive over, and so that would allow truck or vendors to park and we could still utilize it. So go ahead and you can go to the next slide, it's just a different view from over around the courthouse back across. Uh, that's about from the bell tower looking across over to Osborne Agency and those places. You, you see there's a few spots that you missed, that you miss out on, on uh, or that we would landscape instead of parking, not all of it. Uh, because it's kind of deceiving a little bit. That five foot, that sidewalk that runs parallel below or other there on the squares is, is not there now. Your columns, I don't know if I the columns are closer in, so that's a new sidewalk. So what we would be doing is actually taking up some of the existing road between the square and the businesses and utilizing it for this landscape. Uh, and still keep as many parking spots as we can, go ahead. That's from uh, what's the little shop across from Skinner on the corner down there? Sorry? Yeah, from the gun shop looking across the armory, there you go, Monks Variety, if you're old as I am. So same thing right here, you're, you would be literally where that guy is squatted down, he's looking in Holland Girl's shop or Monks, and so that's that. Uh, that's looking where the old mercy was kind of angled across didn't it? No, I'm sorry, that's the title company, yeah. Yeah, but yeah, you're looking from across Sinclair, that's right. You get in the new roof and the same thing with the landscaping in front of that, not chamber sign, but the opposite side, right to your left, Tom. Right there, right there, the garden club, yep. So that would be filling in that striped area hashed with landscaping. Oh, yeah, we should, we could.
Well, I mean, it shows in front of the title company, a uh, like a minivan there. But I mean, is there going to be parking in there or not?
Yeah, I think, well, because that's already concrete, I think it's just not striped. And, and that's, again, remember this is an architect drawing and, and may not even, he knows what's there, but yeah, there will still be parking in front. That's the place that is losing and that's, that's my first, yeah, go to, there you go. So all that is left for those folks is one handicap and I've already told Elliot, bring me back something else. To the right of his, of his uh, cursor, you cannot, you cannot put parking there because that will block that traffic. But what we could do is delete that little section right there. I will say, and, and I think they'll be quick to say too, I don't know if the owner would agree, but most of their customers park on the square and walk across that, well, the other way, they walk from the square. Now.
Were they losing those three spots?
That's correct. Mercy, mercy, the old mercy building also provides parking for them to, along with the hair salon on the corner.
Hey, Tom, can you go back to the first, very first picture? The other concern I got is right there where, where the uh, intersection is in front of like uh, Mavericks and all that.
Right.
We, we can't even get people from running over the rock pillars right there, I mean, what?
Well, so most, every time that's hit is by truck. And when we, when this is a city street, uh, that bypass is complete.
We hope that.
Will all will stop and be truck, on the truck route, except for, there will always be a semi come through for local delivery, always. Uh, and I totally agree, I was a parks director and it happened five times when I was parks director and I don't have any time to spend with him. Uh, so but we can do more things with, and, and I, I think that's just something we created ourselves when we first put the census. My other, my other concern would be where would the other twenty percent match come from? Well, we don't know, this is, what you have in front of you is a tap grant, I think, and Jeff and I are investigating, I'm not, I'm not even saying we do this just yet, we don't have a number. I have a rough, I'll give you a rough number in a minute, just so you're not sticker shocked later. Uh, the twenty, the match grant would like come from general, just like it does when we do uh, trails. This is an eighty, twenty, but we believe there's a one that's no, we don't have it now, I don't, and this is not for now.
Yeah.
This is for, it's, it's very earliest next year. Yeah. So Jeff, I asked Jeff about that and he sent me a message a while ago, Pine was, who'd you say got it, five hundred? Pine Bluff got a half a million dollars for this. Alma, if you've been to Alma, if you want to know what it could look like, go to Alma down in front of their Performing Arts Center. They did this a few years ago and I think it's amazing, it's helped their traffic flow, slowing it down. And it looks wonderful and they used, um, uh, I'm not sure if they use tap or not, but I'll find out.
I saw the one in Pine Bluff. Yeah. It looked fantastic, I mean, it looked like they did it to Gaza.
Yeah.
I mean, it just.
Fine love.
This, this has been, it slows the traffic down?
It does in Alma, because they put trees in the middle of the street.
Should we do this in Meadowbrook?
Maybe, maybe. Anybody want to? I, I'm just saying.
As Tim said it, I, I'll just repeat.
Who said it? All right, move, next, next one. That's, that's about where the gazebo is, I believe, looking across that way. That is from the courthouse across, uh, we don't have that walkway and there's that again. And uh, that's, there's traffic going every which way.
Yep, I think we need to consider too, that when we're doing this, how much of an increase in landscaping maintenance.
Oh, absolutely.
It appears to be quite a bit.
You don't plant two hundred thousand dollars worth of shrubs and think they're going to fend for themselves.
Yeah.
Absolutely, there'll be, not only this, in this project, probably, I haven't talked to Elliot, I don't know that this project has sprinkler in it, system in it, the, the square does, so it wouldn't be that hard to morph into this, but yeah, you've got, I, I'm hoping it does have that in it.
Kim and I were at a place over in, it was outside of Memphis, whatever, it was a, had a nice square like that, but, but the, the bigger areas were, uh, they put them up for adoption too.
Oh, yeah.
Local businesses.
Fort Smith does that a lot, you know, right there on the interstate, there's a great example of that. Manicured as good as it can possibly be, it looks awesome, so. Sonny has mentioned to me a few times because I don't know if you ever saw it, but there was, this doesn't have it, but there was also consideration of putting a giant G right there in that intersection uh, in, in the, in the paving. So, you know, that's kind of cool thought, but it's not part of this. Is that all of them? So.
I like the, I like the red, the brick crosswalk.
So the, the, and the reason for that, and they're brick now, Elliot says they don't have to be brick, you can stain, which we did, Michael Lejeune, they're all over square now, and I'm going to ask you in public before, very long, I want us to take a, a day or two and get our pressure washer and go back and clean that because those are vibrant, but they're not now, because it's been, it's been ten years probably since we did that. Uh, and you don't notice it, but I think with some pressure wash, when you have nothing else to do, uh, we'll pressure wash for that and see what it looks like. I, I didn't think so, so. So that's that, I don't, I'm not asking you to prove anything other than just give you some ideas of what we're thinking about, what we're looking at, what the plan is. And the rough estimate right now is two seventy, two seventy six for this, as, as you see it next year, as we all know, that could be three fifty, easy. And that's not, that's just reality of what it is. But what's not taken into consideration and we will is, is our own in kind. We have the equipment to remove asphalt, probably even do the curb and gutter, I don't know. Uh, and we certainly have scouts that like to plant things, uh, so I think.
Y'all cut it all down.
Not me. This would be a little more obvious though, this one, this one I would notice.
That's pretty obvious to Tyler Cobble.
Well, I'm sure it is, he planted them, so anyway. Not intentional, may I say publicly, we did not do that, I didn't do that intentionally. So that's just something for y'all to uh, ponder on as we move. We'll get you updates as we go along. Okay, so I would ask the councils to table that again.
Make a motion to table.
Second. Motion second?
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Kyle?
Yes. Could our, some of our working kind go for a proportion of the twenty percent?
I think so, typically it does, even with your, doesn't that apply sometimes with your parks? I think it does, I mean, back in my day as a parks guy, it did, so we'll be asking those questions, yeah.
I really doubt Pine Bluff come up with their twenty percent.
Yeah, I don't know. I can promise you through AML, I will find out from every available mayor, which is about five hundred.
With a working.
What you got, how you did it and, and if that's part of it, yeah, we'll find out.
Cause the street department does very valuable work, I mean.
Yeah, absolutely. The mayor that was in office when Alma did theirs is now a, a uh, riverboat captain. So I'll, and I still got his number, so I can ask him for sure. Not a captain, but a kind of, it's kind of. Yeah. Riverboat, that sounds gambling, it's not, it's a tour, it's a cruise, cruises, that's what it is. Okay, uh, number two, city clerk treasure ordinance adopting twenty twenty five military rates. Okay. Uh, number two, city clerk treasure ordinance, adopting 2025 millage rates on the second reading.
Um, I think the county court's office has to have this, that likes to have it in October. So y'all would.
Same.
We didn't do the whole emergency thing last time. I thought I would put it on there ahead of time, but if y'all could go ahead and adopt it under emergency, that would be nice.
This is, we do this every year.
Yes, very. Do what?
Why didn't we?
Well, because I put it on there like a month ahead of what I normally do, just to have it sitting around. I mean, it's not like. Anybody's going to contest that. It's, it's how we get our mileage.
It's hard to, it's hard to prove emergency when you do it every year.
Yeah.
There's that.
I might get motion when we put this on. Title only.
Second, the motion second, uh, title only. That what she said?
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
It's unanimous. An ordinance assessing a five mil tax on real and personal property within the corporate limits of the city of Greenwood, Arkansas. For the year 2025, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
I make a motion, we suspend the rules, waive the third reading.
Second. Motion second, suspend the rules, waive the third reading.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Motion second to adopt.
Ms. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Motion to enact emergency clause.
Second.
Motion second to enact emergency clause.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number three is street. I, I didn't get to go ahead, but my idea is to table this due to our meeting this morning. So if you're okay with that, street is a resolution to mend budget for Fox Run sidewalk construction, which is what Mr. Powell. Brought to our attention last month about wanting that to be a, uh, 10 foot wide multi-use walking trail. We looked at, we as in the planning department brought it to my attention, which brought it to Jeff's attention, which brought it to Stuart's attention. We had a powwow this morning with Casey, with everybody involved. And this, this, these plans are inadequate. That we got from Kraft and Toll, not just Roman and the bus, but they're not complete. Is that, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I threw Kraft and Toll under the, Olson, Olson. Uh, so we have questions for that engineering company. Say, what were you thinking? Uh, this doesn't work one way, two-way width of road. I, I would put to you, the gentleman up here, I assume this, we haven't discussed it yet, cause we've talked about Fox Run. Go ahead. Sonny, you want to come up and talk or you're, you're leaving? Okay. So we haven't talked about this in great detail, but I know we have our own ordinance to when we build, when we, uh, build a new street or have someone build the new street in our town, we hold them accountable and to our own ordinance. I would feel really wrong if we tried to build a road, us build a road and we don't hold ourselves to that same ordinance. And we've never talked about curb and gutter. And we certainly haven't talked about, uh, lighting, decorative lighting. Uh, we have talked about the lighting on the trail, uh, sleeving. These plans did not reflect any of that. Correct? So we've got big Jeff's job tomorrow morning. First thing is to get with Olson and figure out what's going on. You did. So, and I mean, you can ask questions. That's fine. We just, we're not ready.
Well, this gives you the idea of what, what the asphalt cost is.
That's.
And so it's, it's the better bill to asphalt.
Yeah. And, and so the 185 is for the, for this, what, what you were asking about last month. Did we have a number on the road? We, we did, but. Yep. Okay. So it's not complete.
Are you saying 299 for the sidewalk versus 185? 85 for the asphalt?
Yeah, so about, about 30,000.
But then I thought, what are you talking about the street itself?
I'm, I'm, I kind of jumped around a little bit. I'm talking about the re, the street specifically. Uh, the trail is running parallel to the road as it stands, as it should, as it will. But if we do what I believe, and I think planning believes the street should be, that, that needs to move. The, the trail has to move over. Either that moves over or we infringe on Mr. McConnell's property. And I don't think that's a good idea. I don't think, I don't think you'll like that.
We're on our fourth set of plans on this project. And so some things have gotten. Out of whack.
Missed. Missed and bobbled.
So.
Bottom line is y'all need to continue doing some planning.
Yes, yes.
Okay. So I make a motion, we table this. For 30 days.
Thank you. Motion second. You good with that?
I got a comment. We had discussed monies that were. Thrown, kicked around for lake trail upgrade. And then we, this came up and we were talked about last month, maybe. Have we got anywhere with that? Yeah.
Does the state came back to us and told us, told us like their total grant pool, what they have to grant total to the entire state, 250,000. So even if we, even if we made it to grant areas, probably the maximum we would be awarded would be like 10,000.
Right.
So it's a drop in the pocket for any project.
Okay. Yeah, that pay you funding went south for some reason.
Um, question before we call the vote, um, is, is there any variance that's going to be needed or do we not know that yet? Because.
Well, there probably is for the trail sidewalk, exchanging trail for sidewalk. That's.
Yeah.
That's where the variance will be.
Cause I didn't know.
Otherwise we're not planning on having the variance.
But I don't, but I, I don't think we need, I think that's a step too far because we don't know where it's. I may be wrong, but.
Okay.
I think it still will be, but I think we get to get our ducks in a row on the road, street first.
Didn't enough.
And then come back and.
Specific about what they wanted them to go.
Yeah, because, because that ordinance requires a sidewalk, not, right? And if we built this trail, we would do our, and I don't feel bad about invariance on that. That's, that would be like asking, well, they're already doing it. East Village is putting in a trail now, but if they weren't, we would, we would say, hey, we'd rather you do a trail instead of the, the. Yeah.
I mean, you're, you're asking to do something better.
Right. So I think once we get this Olson lined out on the street, then we can move. That, that answer.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Rainwater.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
On this point, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So when we start something like this, why don't we hand out the guy, the, the standards to the engineer and let him go ahead the first time and draw it to standard?
Well, they did, they did the first one with, with the chamber came along, things shifted.
Okay.
We had to do different things. Uh, we had changed the plants for the, the rock, moved it over and set it through. And so that shifted things. And then we changed the trail. So they had it in the first one, but some of it didn't translate on to what we did before.
So we have a standard that's passed in law.
Yes.
And. It, it, it makes, it puts us in a bad predicament when we don't do something and meet our own law and we try to make someone else do it.
And that's what the mayor would say.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to do that.
We're not trying to do that.
And I will say on. And on the planning, kudos. I mean, it's his job to do it, but immediately when these plans showed up, and I don't, I using that phrase loosely, loosely. Planning department issued a, a text in or email, whatever it was saying. This stuff's got to go to the planning first, period. No ifs, ands or buts, right, gentlemen? And then planning commission, yada, yada, yada. We just got, we got misdirected. So we're trying to fix it.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, number four is new business water plant resolution to mend budget for additional funding, concrete tank. The one and only.
Thanks, members of city council. Mr. Derry, Mr. Plummer. Right now, you know, we have a million gallon tank that we had concrete tank put in. I love it. Uh, no maintenance. Uh, it is only for the water that comes from James Ford. We're not allowed to put water in it because it doesn't have a contact chamber. The way the plants are normally built, they're built and they have a, a time where con, where chlorine is put. With water and it stays in there for a certain amount of time to achieve contact time. And we actually have a formula that does that. Used to, in our metal tank, uh, before we had the mini gallon tank, uh, and when we were doing the other stuff, uh, we couldn't go. We can only use half of it. If you went down lower than 10, you, you weren't going to meet your contact time. And that's after I fixed it. It has, its battle system is actually just, they went in the tank and put metal bars up and then strung. Tarps across it of which were put up with. Plastic zip ties and they fell off the first year. I found them after the third year and we had them put it in with, uh, stainless steel. And it stayed and it started working very much better. Our biggest problem now is. It's a metal tank. Metal tanks you have to take down and paint. We hadn't been able to do anything to it because we can't make water and put it anywhere. Cause it can't put it in the, in the million gallon. So we're just stuck. So I thought, you know, if, if we're going to build something, let's build it now. Wish I'd have built it eight years ago. The other one was. 1.3, a dollar 30 per gallon that you, and so for a million gallons, it was, it was a million 30, a million 300. It's gone up and I would rather have the concrete. Uh, also what we're looking at, instead of having a half million is to have a three quarter million. Uh, that way we can add some to it. You know, you don't want to get too much because you don't want the water to sit there that long. But three quarters would really be nice to have that. And then we'd have a million and three quarters. And that would really help. And it's going to have a con, contact time, uh, built into the actual concrete. Uh, it'll be with concrete. It'll be a lot better. In doing so, uh, I talked to the engineer and we figured, well. It was, you know, dollar 30 per gallon. Maybe we ought to go up to two, $2 a gallon. He did. I, I took it to 230. I took it at 1.7 million. He, he said one and a half, and I said 1.75. The lowest bid came in at 2.7, uh, with the actual. Uh, addendum, which I would like to put on there. And it's one, the first company charged a hundred thousand to tear the old metal tank down. And this one's charging 44,000 and that's a steal to get it. I mean, it's, you'd think they'd pay you to take it down because it's worth money, but it is, it is very old. Couple of years, maybe five, maybe two, top's going to fall in just flat out. I've looked at it. We've got videos of it and the, the beams are just shredded and we don't, we've got stuff sitting on top there. So we're a little bit scared of it, but. But anyway, this is something we've needed to do. We missed it. And, uh, we missed it by a million one. So I apologize for that. We still need it. Uh, it's going to be 2.8. So we're adding 1.1 million, 100,000 to it, which is going to be a little bit extra than what we need. And part of that 44,000 is to tear that over down after we get finished, but it will be concrete. No painting, no maintenance. Done. And it will be done by the same people that did the last one, DN tanks. There's only two companies and DN won it last time. Now it's going to probably be different. Guys and everything, but it'll be done the same. And I feel very comfortable with them. I apologize that we missed it, missed this, but. Wasn't as bad as Mina's. I mean, as I think they had two tanks and they put seven million and theirs were 11 million.
There's only two contractors in Arkansas that.
No, two contractors in the United States.
That build these tanks.
That do these things.
And we got both of them that bid.
Yes. Well, we sent out the bids and then. Helped our, our engineer called them both.
And I guess.
Same two that bid last time.
This has been through the water commission and.
Yes.
And it's coming out of cities and city sales use tax water, can't be used for anything else.
Correct.
And.
Ed Sewer actually had to, uh, he wasn't going to spend 1.5, so he put that back for this year. So I was gonna, I mean, I'm, I'm sure we've got the money. And they've got a resolution for 1.1.
I think it's notable that Greg agreed to his punishment for.
Yes.
Over a million dollars that he stayed another five.
No, no, my, my punishment was said by the, uh, water wastewater commission. They'll take it out of my pay next year. I won't be here.
So section one was actually built, building the tank and section two is tearing down the old one.
Yes. And, and the, uh, addend, it's the addendum and it's, and it's 44,000. The first bid was a hundred thousand. The first one came in at 3.2 and this one came on at 2.7 with the addendum. It was. Two, almost 2.8.
When will this happen?
Uh, soon as health park departments had it for about three or four months. Now it's small things. I think it's about ready to go. Uh, we've already accepted the bid. It's calculated and ready to go. I mean, we're, as soon as you say go. Hopefully it'll start in 30 days.
Where's it going to be constructed in?
Just, just toward the fence, uh, where the, the metal one is right here. And just go toward the gate. It's right there. So I was worried about that sign a little bit over there, but I think we're going to be fine on that. They do have to.
It's so much a trip near the, where the trail.
Yeah, we've got a, we've got a really, really beautiful sign out there. Uh, when they built it, it's really something to see. They built scaffolding and they put the center. By itself in the middle of nowhere in the air. And then they build all the sides. And then they put them in and then they build the tops and they put it in to connect to it. And then they drive around it with a really, really thick cable. And they pull it real hard and they just keep driving around and it expands. It pulls it in and then the concrete on top of that too. So. It's really something to see. And I, I wish you'd all come up and see it when it's being done, because it's, it's, uh, different. But, uh, I'm hoping they get it done before I leave, but.
Oh, they will.
Oh, okay.
I make a motion, we adopt the resolution for the additional funding.
Second. Motion second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Probably the last time I'll beg for something. So I really appreciate you guys. You've always helped me a whole lot and I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
You got five years, man. Thank you, sir. Number five is police in the mending budget for changing capital improvements project. Chief.
Counselor, Mr. Attorney, Madam Clerk, Mr. Mayor. I have three resolutions in front of you. The first being, uh, if you look at the bids we got for the Sallyport, it's just, uh. I don't even know what to say about them really. So 106,000, one's 120 and the other one's 150. And at this point, I don't think it's just five of them. So what I'm asking you is you'll, uh, allow me to use that. I think it's a blessing in disguise because since during this process, we've learned about some AWIN radios. It's in our car that we purchased in 2005, under the AWIN's grant. I don't know if y'all remember that. But they're at the end of life. So I was going to have to come to you next year and ask for this, uh, anyhow. It's kind of like a cell phone. From what I understand is basically they're not even going to use anymore because, uh, you're going to have to buy the new upgraded version. So I'm asking to take that money that you set aside for the Sallyport. I'm asking you to, that we move that money towards. The radios for 12 radios and the purchase of some weapon, uh, updated weapon systems. Basically what we would do is purchase new firearms for the officers that would mimic what, uh, Sebastian County has purchased and as well as Fort Smith. Sebastian County already has them in place. They're using them today. And Fort Smith has purchased, already purchased all the firearms, but they're going to phase them in as they can get the training done. Uh, it's basically a, uh, pistol with holographic sights with the, with a red dot scope. So it's new technology. You can go from low light to no light to daylight and, and, uh, get on target quicker. If you're in a football stadium or whatnot, if you're, you're used to firing weapons, you, you know, you, you focus on the front sight and your target should be blurred. Well, this is just the opposite. You want your target to be clear, everything to be focused. And if you think about the litigation or the, uh, risk management involved. Uh, if you're in that situation, it's a, it's a, it's a no brainer. So I'm, I'm asking that you do that if we could, uh, if you'll allow me to do that.
So you're actually going to spend less than what you had. You've got 12,000.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That, and, uh, that's a rough estimate from Tico Safety. And what we're going to do is, uh, I'm going to get the name wrong again, Humorex that is in Sebastian County. That's who Fort Smith and Sebastian County has purchased their, purchased their firearms from. Well, from what I hear, we'll probably get a better deal from Humorex and that's probably the, uh, route we'll go. We just don't know yet. This is a rough estimate to give you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And I'm going to drop the ball on you on the second resolution about the other 12,000.
Oh, you got, you got it. Been visiting with Stuart a little bit, actually.
Yes, sir.
You know how these sheep are. They get together.
Well, the, are you never going to need a Sallyport or?
I, I think, I don't think at the cost. If you, if you look at what I presented to you, it's basically a metal overhang building. If we come into the, uh, I talked to the mayor about this. It's, it's a project that I was passionate about. I really wanted it. There was a need for it, but I don't think there's a need for it at that cost. I'll, if we have to store a piece of evidence or a car as evidence, we're going to have to reach out to the prosecutor's office and, and, uh, you know. See what we do about storing that evidence. But I just can't justify spending 106,000 for a metal on it. Basically it's what it is. And I've got the, uh, you know, the emails from Mr. Travis from Mahog and it was, he's. And I've got the, uh, you know, the email from Mr. Travis from Mahog and it was, he, he expected it to be fifty five thousand. And uh, you know, the, the lowest bid's a hundred and six, so I just, with your blessing, this is what I think this is the route we need to go.
I see you moved that money to the next red resolution where you rounded up. You have been visiting this Stewart. So I, I make a motion, we adopt the resolution, reappropriating money.
Second. We have motion of second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, number six is also police resolution, amending budget relocating funds for reallocating funds, sorry, for vehicle replacement.
Yes, sir. So unfortunately we wrecked a car and it's been totaled out by the insurance company. The cost of replacing that car is roughly fifty seven thousand, once you, uh, once you add on outfitting the car. The insurance is going to give us thirty, roughly thirty thousand. So I'm going to incur the cost that's already in my budget to take, take care of the remaining. I think it's roughly twenty six thousand that we're going to have to come up with. And I would just incur that, that's already in my budget through, through other items, line items.
You're going to, out of that, clarify that, out of that twenty six thousand, you're going to use the over the allocated portion that you just created in the last.
Right. Were you rounded up?
Fourteen thousand is what you're actually, he's, he's going to try to absorb that as operating expense, but you know that capital is a line item budget. So you, you would have to approve the operational expense used towards the capital side. So to make this simple and clean, I just did the resolution, go fourteen thousand five in the actual capital budget, so it will be there. Rest assured though, that when you look at the consolidated police budget, uh, his operational savings or surplus will offset that. He's not trying to, he's not trying to hide that in other words, or force it to use. He's, he's disclosing it in that fourteen thousand is well within the authority for him to have it included in his new budget.
I make a motion for this resolution.
Second.
Excuse me, motion of second to approve.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Number seven is police also resolution purchase reimbursable radios.
Hang on chief, before you get going.
Yes, sir.
When you came, I'm on board, you commented about how you were going to try to get a fleet look and matching. Are we still trying to get that route?
That's a silver patrol car and we're going to try to keep everything silver. Yes, sir. That, that estimate is for a upgrade of four hundred dollars to make it silver. That forty one thousand, I believe. Yes, sir. Uh, the, the third resolution is basically I'm asking, uh, Mr. Cecil attached with this resolution is a letter from Mr. Cecil from the school. He's basically agreed to pay for this. I just need to buy the radios in-house at my house so that we can get the channels put in and then they will purchase it. They will belong to the city, own property from the city, but they'll be assigned to the security, uh, the uh, say, school security officers. Mr. Cottle, Jimmy Poole, uh, Andy Poole, Mr. Cottle and uh, Greg Palmer.
So it's.
So it's no cost to the city and it, it allows us to communicate back and forth when we're at the high school football games or wearing the hallways, they can communicate with us. They're all reserve officers, as you know, so uh, they have access to the channel. And we just need to buy it from the police department so we can get the, the encrypted channels put on.
Well, I make a motion to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Motion of second to adopt.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, counsel.
Number eight is council maker, advice request for council related city business. Yeah, so a couple of times in the last year, six years, I've mentioned, um, we, we as city councilmen use our own personal devices, um, for phone calls, emails. Um, and I think, um, a couple of months ago, we had a, a councilman mention that as well about using city tablets for official city business. And I was just wondering, uh, and I'd asked Mr. Derry about what, what the cost would be for us to get official city emails and or officials, city tablets. I'm not interested in phones, but I think as city officials, I think we should be using city equipment for official city business. Whether we're FOI'd or there's some type of an investigation, uh, where we need to turn this equipment in. I just think it would be more appropriate, um, to do that on official city property. Just my thoughts. So I'll just kind of open it for, for discussion and see what you guys felt about that.
It'd be helpful to us when we get FOI'd, when Jim Newcomb wants something overnight, we just go give him the tab, give, and it doesn't affect all the rest of our lives with work and bills and invoicing and online QuickBooks and all that kind of stuff.
Charlie, how much, how much were these, these tablets?
It's probably like a hundred and twenty something bucks a piece. They were really good cost. They're not on any kind of, you know.
Yeah, so.
Internet, they're just wifi table. That's why they're so cheap. I mean, you could use something like that to always check your email and stuff. It's not a phone.
As long as you're close to them.
Yeah, as long as you have internet.
Now, I, and I'm guessing everybody knows this, but when you, when an email comes into our city email, you're able to have it entered forward to a personal account. I mean, when people enter, eat, send me something, I don't know if you get those or not. If you get something to your Ralph at Greenwood Ark, yada, yada, it goes to your Ralph at, it can go to your personal when you're able to have it forwarded.
That was part of the problem just recently. We had an issue with an email, uh, and that's been cleared up. But, but uh, yeah, I mean, that, that's what I'm saying. If, if you've got an official city email, everyone knows. And that way, when you lose relation or you leave or whatever, that email goes directly to that ward and that position. It goes straight to that next person. There's no making up a new email or anything like that. The, the tablet, the email, everything would go directly to that person. And that would be reserved for official city business. Thoughts, gentlemen?
I think it ought to be considered to be included in next year's budget since we're so close.
I mean, you know, I think the law, I don't know Travis could opine, but FOIA law, you know, if somebody alleges that you've talked about city business and texting on your personal phone, that can get FOIA'd, your phone. Just that part of it, you know? So I mean, there's still that, but, but if you want to be able to say, all I ever do is on this tablet.
Well, that's what, because that was part of the problem is I, I work a lot and so I use my state email for state business. And I use my wife's email for all other business and I, and so I don't want, I don't want anything to go through personal that, that should go through city professional. And so I want, I want to use city equipment for city business and city email.
Are you going to ask that the city give you a GWARK email?
Well, we had discussed that before and, and it was going to cost money, astronomical money is what I was.
I don't know if it's astronomical, but, but there's a, like four hundred and something bucks.
It shouldn't be.
Per person?
For six.
Oh, yes, it's not.
That's not that bad.
Unreasonable. I think it makes sense because that's everybody else is a G, G work.
Not for our technician that we have through our contract ID saying that we were out of email addresses. So we had, that's, that's what I do.
I think the uniformity of that would be important. I, with what Charlotte just said, that knowing that we all, you can, they can, they, anybody could FOI your personal. And I know that's not what you're trying to get away from, but it makes sense that you have something that's city and that's what you do your business on, doesn't mean you won't sometime have to use your, your phone or something, but.
I just think it's more professional if we're going to be doing city business.
Yeah, and that cost is not.
The lowest cost would be like something like these tablets. Rather than a phone, because that's got a monthly, you know, eighty dollars a month or whatever it is.
So I just like, I mean, I, I would like for us to consider that in the next budget.
Tom, plug her in.
Just have to realize that some of us that are not around wifi for twelve hours a day would not be very responsive. True.
You what?
Use your phone as a hotspot.
I know about cassettes and eight tracks, I don't know what. I have nothing where you. Okay, so just for consideration.
Just for consideration.
Not asking for a vote or anything.
Not at this moment.
Okay.
I think that'd be good, just like showing that the streetscape, you know, I'm going to get to all of us and just we got right there on our tablets and stuff.
Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Number nine is Parks confirmation of Ms. Bell's membership renewal on Parks Committee or Commission, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion, we renew her Parks Commission.
Motion of second to renew Ms. Bell's membership.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
I guess. Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Mr. Powell.
Yes.
I guess.
All right, thank you, gentlemen. You said, I guess, what was that? Okay. Number ten, finance intent of stalemate for check transactions.
Okay. What's happened recently is that one of our general fund checks was compromised. And it was not, it didn't cause any harm to the city. The check was returned back to the bank that was clearing, the clearing bank at the other, um, business bank that intercepted the check and negotiated it. But because it was a general fund, that is a very, very detailed account.
Long standing.
Long standing. If we had to cancel that or close that account and sign a new number to it, it would be a massive nightmare. So one of the things that I did immediately was work with the bank and get positive pay in the works. The problem, the hiccup with positive pay is that this check that was negotiated and only the payee changed. I guess they were real happy with the date of the check, the number of the check and the actual amount of the check. They didn't want to change any of those, they just changed the payee. And then, um, that's one of the things that is easy to do for a positive pay is check number, check date, check amount. All the numbers are easy to do, but payee is the thing that takes a little bit longer as far as programming is concerned for their automated system. What happens is every night we would send them an actual check register, a check issued register in time to be cut checks. And then they would clear checks through our check register. They would load that file into their system and as checks came in declared, they automatically cleared based on no exceptions to our list. However, if there was an exception, it would kick back to us immediately for a twenty four hour review. And we would have twenty four hours in order to say yes or no. If we don't respond, it's automatically kicked back. It's assuming it's not valid when it comes to us as an exception if we don't respond. So that's in the works. They're testing the final version of it, but in the meantime, we had to disclose this through our legislative audit. And we were working on it, our checks do not have intent of stalemate. So people lose checks all the time, checks get lost in the mail, does somebody return the check, the number's compromised. We wanted to put an intent of stalemate on the checks. We don't have that right now. Right now the checks are wide open and theoretically the bank has nothing giving them an instruction as to the city's intent of stalemate. So we wanted to put void after ninety days on all of our checks for all the various accounts. So that it would, uh, help us with as far as the, uh, transactions flowing through our systems. It would give us a smaller window of opportunity for somebody that intercepted one of the checks. And the positive pay would catch all we got. So we just need to disclose that, tell you what it's all about. And, um, that's, that's pretty much a good standard common business practice. Most of the checks you get in the mail from entities or organizations have that intent of stalemate sign.
We just need a vote to allow us to put a void after ninety days on all of the city's checks.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
Doesn't have to be ninety days?
It'll be printed on the checks.
You're saying it doesn't have to be ninety, can be whatever we want?
You can set the length, but we think that the common business.
It's ninety days.
Yeah.
Is that what you want?
That's what Tom and I decided that would be good. Especially considering the amount of time that some of these uncashed things hang out there.
I like ten days.
I think there was a motion.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
Powell.
Yes.
Thank you, gentlemen. Next, number eleven is fire resolutions, amend budget for each back unit station number one.
Peter, City Attorney, Mr. Derry, Counsel. Let you know, uh, I guess a couple of months ago, possibility of having our, uh, heat and air units that's in our, uh, training room to be, needed to be replaced at some point. And it's to that point now where it's not working at all. Well, it's working, it's just kind of keeping it lukewarm, even though it's not cool. This is an original unit on the, this is our last one, uh, with the building. And so we've been, uh, really babying this thing for a long time because, you know, they don't make them like they used to. And this thing, I was at twenty seven, ninety seven, ninety seven, when it was put in. And so it's our last one and, uh, and so, uh, I've had, uh, Mr. Falconberry from Greenwood Air. He's been, he's been messing with it and it, it's been messed with for years. But he, he told me this summer, he said it's on its last leg. Maybe see how, how many more months you can get out of it and put it on next year's budget. But it's not cooling at all now. And, uh, then he informed me that there's going to be a five hundred dollar, uh, increase because of change in freon standards at the first of the year. And so I said, well, we'll go ahead and try to save at least five hundred dollars on it and put it and do it now. We've got, talked with Tom and he said, yeah, you've, you're pretty good on your budget right now, at least on funds to do that. He actually quoted too, he quoted the four ton for the training room. And we had talked about the three ton in the restroom because it's, I hate to say it, it's going to be at that point at some, sometime. But, uh, right now it, it's still going, it's still going. So, uh, we're just looking at the four ton, which is, uh, for the training room. And it came in at ninety three eighty, but we wanted to budget about ten grand, just in case there's any overruns. So we don't have to come back and ask for anything else. So there's a resolution amending the budget for, uh, an HVAC unit, uh, and requesting ten thousand to cover the cost.
So you're doing both of them?
No, we're just doing that one. He just sent me a quote on both. We, we had discussed the other one, he wanted to. Yeah, yeah, the other shoe's a little smaller. There's a total of five units there. We got the two units that are, uh, on top of the new part and the three units that went with the building. And, and I don't know who originally designed it, but what was considered the women's quarters and the men's quarters is connected with the same unit. And the men's quarters is twice the size. So you freeze in the women's quarter and you burn up in the men's. And so at some point we're going to have to separate that because, I mean, seriously, it's ice cold in that one room and you go in the other one and you're burning up.
Do the women complain?
We don't have any that complain yet. Well, Angie complains. Angie's office is hooked to my office, so she, she wears, you know, a parka and I'm in there and it's tank top.
And this was Mr. Falconberry?
Yes, Greenwood Air.
It, I, I don't mean this, but do we do, do we need to do a, a statement of doing business with? We have, we've gone on top of it. Okay. I didn't know if we had decided on doing that every time we did business with that same. Okay.
One time.
All right. That's all I need.
I make a motion to pass the resolution.
Second. Motion of second passed.
Mr. Brown.
Yes.
Mr. Maker.
Yes.
Mr. Terry.
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater.
Yes.
And Mr. Powell.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Chief, thank you, man. The, uh, just a little commercial quick one. Uh, Mr. Falconberry does a great job. He's, he's doing all the maintenance everywhere. I think everybody's building for the most part, so, uh, he keeps us, he keeps us heated and cool, so I appreciate it. He is very good to work with. Uh, number twelve, a street resolution, amend budget for mobile street signs. Sign, I did, I knew I was going to do that. I did it earlier today too.
This is the increase that we had on the sign that was in this year's budget. So ten thousand was budgeted, uh, they had gone up. So, uh, Tom and I talked, there's a couple of pieces of my equipment, my capital budget that aren't going to come in this year. So, but they're. So they, they've been ordered, but they're not here. So I've got 6,000. Well, so I need 6,500 that will allocate. So it'll be $4,500 that we need to allocate. I'm sorry, 6,400, 6,500. Golly, I can't talk. $6,500 that we need to allocate, reallocate out of our capital funds for this year.
So what it says right here, do, does the point of sale come to Greenwood? I mean, do we get the tax off of this or?
If it's delivered here.
If we order from the company, I guess it would, wouldn't it or not?
Taxes and applicable fees are not included. It says taxes and applicable fees are not included.
I have my glasses.
The house dropping is in Van Buren. Is that right?
Yes.
That's where their yard is.
He's asking if we're going to get the taxes if there is.
I don't think we get them then.
Yeah, I think.
Freight delivered to them or is it freight delivered to us?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question. I can find that out.
And this is to replace the one we've been renting?
Yeah, it, it, we have returned that one.
And did you ask them if they'd cut us a deal on buying the one we've been renting?
They, they, they will.
And they said.
They looked at me like.
They will not, they will not sell any of the ones that they rent. And mostly because I guess if we have a problem, then they're, they're stuck with our problem too. So they don't want to have to deal with that on their rental sign. So we tried that. We've tried several different ways. As a matter of fact, the GSA contract is actually higher than this. So we looked at going direct and that didn't help us any at all. So this is the best deal that we found to do that. And once again, this is to replace one of the ones. We've already replaced one. This is replace the other one that went down the creek in June of 2022, which was parked my coming on.
I think we should replace it and stuff when we start out the two, you know, I think that, you know, the two come in handy. The, and were we, were we covered by any kind of insurance or not on these?
It's kind of like what Brad was talking about on his car. I mean, he's only getting $30,000 for his car and but a new one is however much it is, 60 something thousand dollars. And this was, this is common. I had the same problem when I was at another government agency that we, we were only replaced one thing because we only got money from two things. So it wasn't enough. It was just, it's kind of crazy. So anyway, that's kind of where we are. I don't know why it wasn't replaced before.
Will, will we owe taxes on this or will we not? Because we're a municipality?
Yes, we will owe taxes.
Yeah, we have to pay.
Yeah, they're exempt.
We wait until we have a more accurate cost estimate before we pass this additional 80.
Even with the taxes, he still has enough in his, in what he's going to move out of 24, budget 25 to cover the cost of that with taxes. It just doesn't have taxes in that quote.
And so if we're paying freight, I'd, I'd rather rest of pay freight to ship.
I'll see if we can't do that. That makes more sense to me to, in us get the return. So, yeah.
But y'all didn't, y'all mixed part of it in the budget, right? The city council did.
We probably did, you know.
So let's buy the thing so that we don't waste any more money on the, not just my treasurer's hat. Thank you.
I don't like that.
Think everybody wants it.
No. The rental part's not really, I mean, we could continue to rent it for the year and then start all over with a new one. I mean.
That's just wasting money though.
Well, there sure was a lot of scuttlebutt about this sign though. I got a lot of heat from this deal last, since we talked about it before. I'm like, what are y'all? So entertaining motion? Yeah, absolutely. I'll make a motion. We pass this resolution. Motion second pass.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
No.
Mr. Terry?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
No.
Mr. Powell?
No.
Fails. On lack of majority.
I'll ask a quick question. Was it this recommended by, I left the room at AMP. Mr. Turner came to AMP to request funds. I believe the AMP said, go to council per.
I'm the one that said to go to council.
What, was that agreed upon by bo, both councilmen in the AMP?
It might not have been. I don't know. I'm.
I'm just curious. Were you suggesting this or?
I think AC suggested.
He did. He said that. Did you vote? Or not? I don't know. I wasn't in the room.
It wasn't a vote.
It was just a suggestion?
Yeah, they just didn't take any action on the grant request.
And I know we voted. I'm just curious why we wouldn't purchase this now. Do you want to? I know he's, I'm just curious. I just.
It sounds like the council wants the two signs.
I know, but I don't know why.
But I don't know why they won't.
So if we don't have two, if we don't buy one, and if you want two, we got to release it again, which I stopped the bleeding last month at the least because I thought that was what we wanted. I'm just curious. I'm addressing those that voted no, obviously, but I'm just curious.
They can always bring it up in next year's budget.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Okay.
Rent that or?
I guess. Do you want?
I hope we want to rent till the end of the year. I'm just saying, we just went along with one until we put in the budget myself.
I don't understand. I'm curious. No way? Mr. Powell?
I'd like to sit in next year's budget justified and explained exactly why we need it.
Agreed. Okay. Fair enough.
We're, we're just within a month from next year's budget.
I understand. That's why it's unusual for me to not do it now. I don't want. We get bogged down enough with budget stuff. I'm just curious. Moving on. Uh, department reports and questions from council. Yes, sir.
Department of Public Safety Grant. I'm highly optimistic that we'll get that. That's for 75,000. It's strictly for body cameras and, and the technology for the body cameras. And we also applied for a $20,000 firehouse grant. It's non-matching and that is strictly for computer technology and stuff like that. I just wanted y'all to be aware that we applied for those two grants. Hopefully we'll get, I'm optimistic we'll get the DPS grant. I'm not sure about the firehouse grant.
With the, we like to pay out an upload monthly.
Oh, yes, sir. Oh, it's, it's ongoing cost. Yes, sir.
Do you think you'll hear?
I hope to hear about the DPS grant. Maybe November, maybe December, but pretty soon.
Very soon.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. Other department heads. I'd like to ask them questions. Chief?
And they've come to me and told me that an FCC says we don't have enough capacity. So I talked to him again this week and it has nothing to do with, it's more of the area doesn't have the capacity. They said the only person, the only place it's worked in the state is in Pine Bluff because there's not being used so much. But Northwest Arkansas, they've tried to get them and they just don't have, there's too many channels. I talked with Jesse Freeze, person that's our salesperson. He said they're trying one more, trying, he called it end around. Try to figure out if they could find a different, another channel where we can go directly to it. And they're working on it. So I'm just letting you know, it's not, the reason it hasn't been used is pretty good, you know, 20, what is it? $25,000 in, in the budget. It's not that we're ignoring it. It's just we're waiting to hear back from whether it's even going to be possible. And, and so anyway, I'm just going to give you an update on that because I know y'all have asked about it in the past and.
And this is something that benefits a police department.
It would, but I mean, the thing is, is they were like, man, we've, I talked with the regional sales rep that's with them at one of the trade shows that we go to. And he said, yeah, we're working on that. He said, I don't think it's going to work out for you. But we're, we're hopefully up here. He just said, I don't, he said, it's, he said Northwest Arkansas has tried it two or three times and, and they're having the same problem that you guys are of capacity. And you know more about it than I, I do because Jeff, Jeff nicknames Radio Shack and college is put that way. I don't know much about radios, but he, he knows. Yeah. So I, uh, but I'm, I'm waiting to hear back from him on it and try to figure out if this is going to work or not. So I don't want, let's put it this way. I don't want to buy something that's going to work on one little channel, not for that price. And hopefully we got towers that are coming in here. I talked with them about the towers. They seem to think that by the end of 2025, those tires should be up and running. We'll see if that helps. The main thing is, is we're, we're in a low, we're, we're in a bowl here in Greenwood either way. And it'd be nice to have those repeaters working.
I saw a picture of one of those towers being erected at the meeting I had with the judge. I'm not sure which, where it was, but. Witcherville.
Yeah. So there's one in Witcherville and one, I think Sugarloaf. So we're, they're, they're in the process right now. And I think the, the towers themselves, the actual towers will be up by the end of the year. But all the technology and all the wiring and everything's got a ways to go. So I was just asking, I was asking Travis Cooper the other day, when, when do you think the end all be all? Because we're in the same problem. Our pagers, the new pagers are wanting us to go to, go off the A-Win system. So I've got a whole 28 to 30 pagers that this, that the county paid for us over there that right now don't work. And so we're still using our old paging system. And you can ask anybody on the fire department. Thank God we have the, the app that goes to our phone. Because some of the times the pagers go off, sometimes they don't. And, uh, well, I sometimes wish we were back on the analog system because everything works so well in Greenwood, but it's not, not the way it is. Yeah, the fire phone. So anyway, I'm just going to give you an update.
Thanks, chief. Yes, sir. Mr. Lord. I have a note. I'm assuming that's what you're going to speak on. No, you're good.
I wanted to thank the city council and the city of Greenwood for working with Masonic Lodge. We are, we're almost finished with our design. Matter of fact, the building committee will meet tomorrow night to approve it. Or they pick somebody else to finish it. I'm, I'm kidding. Y'all can laugh. One, one of the things that I am encouraged about, and I wanted to, I wanted to speak before we left. The city of Greenwood offered to help us. You didn't have to. So thank you. Every time I've been to a city council meeting, almost every time there's been an Eagle Scout walk up in front of this platform or be given something for what they have done in service to this community. And our lodge is stepping out and we have designed our building to help them have a permanent meeting room and a place to store some of their stuff. That has to be voted on, but it's in the plan currently. So if you know a Mason, tell them. We appreciate y'all helping the Eagle Scouts. Because it's something they do a service. So we want to try to help them. So thank y'all and hopefully we get to help y'all.
Before you sit down, sir, if you don't mind, would you give a real quick, I had a little note on your showcase home and what's happening out there and the, and the visitors? Would you elaborate?
Yes, I'd love to.
I thought you might.
Mr. Maker came and, and he viewed our house and I'd encourage the rest of you to come out. The groundbreaking for the showcase home, the 2024 showcase home was one of the largest groundbreakings in 28 years. That many people showed up.
And it was hot.
The, the VIP banquet that we had just this past night was one of the largest in 28 years. It is a beautiful home. Fabulous contractor. Did a great job.
Okay, you'd sit down. Thanks for coming.
But I, I would like you to come out and look at it. Currently we have already had over 800 people in three days come through the house. That means we've had 800 people come in to Greenwood. Hopefully they stop and bought gas or they ate at a restaurant. So this was to let people know that we're here and thank you because you approved the subdivision and I thank the city for working with us. The comment has been made several times. This is one of the cleanest subdivisions that's in a working condition. And, and it is because of the people and, and you guys. So thank you. Again, we thank you from the lodge. And I thank the Eagle Scouts for what they do and we're certainly hoping to help you guys now. Come and see the showcase home.
Thank you, buddy. It is a beautiful home. I made an offer of 125 and they laughed me out. So. Said it wouldn't even buy the garage. Thank you, sir. Anything else for a department head or anybody?
I was going to ask Casey if we could get an update on the splash pad.
Yeah. There's rock.
There's rock, yeah.
They just got to get foundation.
I don't know if y'all have been up there lately, but pretty soon you'll start to see a ton of progress on the actual decking of the splash pad. The contractor that's responsible for the feet, the water features is there. They've poured individual footings for those individual splash pad features, I guess you could call them. So I think that they're setting on two by two footings. Once they have all those set, they'll start to put rebar in place on the decking and start to pour concrete for the entire deck. I think our water, we talked this morning, our water and sewer project is about one to two weeks out. I think you said they're likely going to start next week. Electricity from Main Street to the splash pad should start any day. And they're clearing and grubbing for the road right now. Also clearing and grubbing for that water and sewer project and for the electricity to be routed up there. The building has a roof on it now and they're working on some of the finishing touches for inside, not, obviously not the finishing, finishing touches, but the exterior of the building, they're starting to rough in, get it in good shape to where it's ready to go.
It says the restroom building is roughed in. Is that, I have, I don't remember looking at a rendering or whatever we might've had of this. Is it going to be changing area, a showering area, all, I mean, has?
Just, just bathrooms.
Okay.
Again, what was the completion date?
I want it, next year is what I'm saying right now. We're going to be able to use it next year. I wanted it to, to look like a splash pad by the end of this month.
So you're, you're saying it's going to be usable by the season next year?
Correct.
So may.
That's correct.
So five of 25.
That's correct.
Thanks, sir.
You bet.
Appreciate it. I've got a couple of updates. If you don't mind, while you're pondering on these department heads, if you need to more bid update, you have it in your packet. We, we, third time they used this, the charm, but in our case it was the fourth time was a charm to go out for bids on the remodel of the Greenwood Senior Center project that we bought two years ago, almost to the day. When we did the bid opening, you have the bids there in front of you. As you know, I've been talking about for a long time. We have a $500,000 grant from AEDC. And my, it's kind of like the Sally Port. You never know until you put it out for bid, chief. But this thing came back at one point, one, two and three million dollars. First time went down to 900, went down to 800. Finally did more value engineering on it and Travis understands, understood we have a half million dollars. We're not planning on using any other monies to redo this building to make it what we need or what the seniors need. So there are the bids. The parent little bid is RMC Incorporated. It's Mike Cohie, owner, lives here in Greenwood. At $461,000. The next one was 518, 203. And the next one was four, I'm sorry, 616, 100. We are literally still waiting for all the verifications to come back from MAHG. No contract has been signed yet. I'll bring that to your attention once we get the approval on the, on the verification. I'll bring that to your attention once we get the approval on the, on the verification. Uh, Travis, as always, goes back to the drawing board and makes sure everything's correct with the, with the apparent little bidder. And we're keeping our fingers crossed and sounds and looks really good that this four sixty-one will stand. Uh, immediately, uh, cause I'm greedy, uh, Tracy McKinnon was here when we opened bids. Uh, that leaves thirty-nine thousand dollars on the table from the grant. I said, do we get that? And she, she kind of grinned. She said, let me find out. If, if that's, makes sense to me that we have a $500,000 grant, we get to use it all. We could take that thirty-nine and do more things to the building. Uh, and or to what I'm gonna bring up now is that my next, uh, uh, project or my next goal for this is to remedy, uh, the water, uh, or the fire suppression, uh, issue out there. We know it's a three inch, three inch, three inch line, James Fort currently. It is in the city limits, but it's a James Fort line. We don't, haven't got all details from the chief, but we're working with, with fire department, making sure we, we've got, I, I couldn't, one might say, why didn't you pursue that before you got all this done? It would have been irrelevant if I didn't get the grant and down underneath the five hundred. So now that that's done, I have very, quite a few irons in the fire, uh, one with James Fort to talk about. They have a ten inch line directly across seventy-one from this. Uh, we, we're, we're waiting to have a meeting with James Fort. I know Hunter's already talked to Jeff, out there about it, the possibility, what, or what is, what are the possibilities? One, I won't, this is just here, this is not hearsay, but it's, it's the process of, uh, do we, can we put a hydrant on that side of the highway and get us a good distance from the center? Throw a lot, throw the truck lines across the highway and somebody said, well, you can't do that. I said, well, says who? Uh, we do it all the time when there's wrecks and things. I called R-DOT and they go, how else would you fight that fire? So, that's a possibility to just do that. We're waiting to hear from Jeff to see what that would cost for a hydrant, uh, to put on their ten inch line. There's consideration, don't have a cost estimate. It would be extremely high to bore underneath that four lane highway to get over on our side. Don't wanna have to do that. We had a rough estimate and it was a lot. So I won't share that, scare you just yet. Uh, if we can get it on our side, again, just a thought is that somebody in the area that would want, need water service, uh, on the other side of, of ten from us. There could be some interest from those folks to help us and, and combine with our efforts to get water. And, and then them go underneath the two lane highway before that highway ten becomes a five lane would be much less expensive. So, uh, we talked about a tank, uh, above ground tank. We talked about a pond. Uh, we've got some estimates on that. Uh, none of these estimates are cheap. I've talked a little bit to the water wastewater commission. I'll bring that back to them to say, hey, what do you guys think about this, all of this? Uh, one, and, and I know it's gonna sound like I'm just doing it for the center. That is, I need it for the center. We need it for the center. But in my opinion, when I'm long gone, highway ten, that we're gonna widen to ten, to five lanes is gonna be our economic development growth area, whether it's subdivisions or commercial property. And that's all gonna need water and infrastructure. Uh, so, it would behoove us to, to really think hard and, and long about getting that started on that end where we can bring it back into Greenwood. Uh, on, uh, as you know, everything on the, uh, north side of ten, how did I do? Something is that right? Is in, is currently in the city limits, uh, sir? All the way to seventy-one. Uh, and on the south side, the only thing that's in the city, I think it stops about Sweptco-ish or misses, uh, the lady's house there beyond Sweptco a little bit, past Strogers. That stops and it's not city limits until you get to our facility at the corner of ten. So all of that is yet to happen, but it's gonna happen in somebody's lifetime. And I think it's important that we look down the road. Pardon the pun, literally to get, um, water service down there and of course sewer at some point. So that's where I, we are on this. I'm very, very, very excited. I can't tell you how excited I was. I almost hugged Travis and he's not a huggable guy. He doesn't, he's kind of a quiet, laid back guy. But, uh, we, we got this under bid, wait, again, waiting for the official thumbs up. And if, and if it is good, I got, I texted him just today to say, hey, it hurt me. It's kind of like R-DOT. When R-DOT sees me coming, they're, they're running and, and now, now it's Travis with, uh, MAHG. I asked him today, I'm giving a report tonight, tell me what you got. And he said basically what I just said. But if everything works out this week, which we should know this week, possibly tomorrow with, uh, Mr. Kohe, that he could start and no later than the end of this month, maybe next couple, I think he's ready to start tomorrow. They don't have to bring in equipment. This is just people in, in, uh, remodeling that facility. So, we did a value engineer. And as I said, I went immediately to the, the folks over at the senior citizen center. I got the same question. Is this gonna happen in my lifetime? I mean, they've literally asked me that. And I said, we hope so. Uh, and, and it's going to. So we did lose, uh, the outside buildings. We had to take additions. Those are very expensive. Ten times what they should be, but it's commercial and it's municipal. So that's how they get us. And so we had to take those off. We, we can put those, two rooms inside the building. We can do some of that in-house. So, we've got a, we've got a big plan and it's coming together, literally after two years of applying for this grant. Or two years after purchasing the facility with, uh, ARPA money. Again, no new money, half a million dollar grant and eight, we spent eight hundred and some change on the building and bought and paid for it. Uh, those people are excited to get in it. They can't wait and they, they're anxious to get into a new facility.
I'd like to, uh, uh, look at the value engineering and kind of, it, it seems like a stretch, you know, like saying, you said the originals were like, you know, up around one point one million and, then down to around seven or eight hundred thousand and now we're under four. I would like to.
Not under four, under five.
Under five.
Under five.
Uh, to see the, uh, uh, the value engineering, you know, aspects of it, just seeing what they have cut out and what is, you know, uh, because, you know, it's just, it's a big stretch.
I can certainly share that with you, but let me tell you what we're keeping. This is the important part. I joke a little bit myself that we're getting a, we're getting an elaborate paint job for five, for a half a million dollars. It's, I will say this and I've said it publicly, it is, it is the signs of the time. It is ridiculous that this, this remodel cost a half a million dollars. I could have hired a local contractor and I talked to several to go out there and do this. And one of the costs, one of the cost estimates from one of them, when we first started, was about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Everything I wanted, we wanted for a hundred and eighty thousand dollars because if we didn't use a grant, and if, and you didn't have to go through the grant guidelines and you didn't have to hire an architect. God bless architects, but I think everybody here is pointing out that costs us a lot of money and you, and we can't get, we can't do without them. It's, it's what we do.
Chief Hobson.
Same thing. He, he is, he has seen and, and everything he said about the Sally Port is my, this project times twenty. You, you take a fifty thousand dollar Sally Port and it's a hundred thousand. You take a, you take what should be a hundred and eighty thousand dollar remodel and it, and it's after a lot of value engineering, it's half a million. So what we are getting, the very important parts that we're getting is a completely remodeled and equipped, brand new kitchen from what's out there. It was sufficient for a venue, but it, it was not sufficient for a senior citizen center. So we're getting all new stainless steel, state of the art equipment. Not a cool, we, we took out the, the, uh, uh, walk-in cooler and freezer, which was an old restaurant guy. I wanted that for them. They don't have it now. What they do have is a hospodge of donated refrigerators. That is, is a horrible situation. But they're getting all new freezers to replace the, the coolers.
I thought we were gonna get a freezer from the old.
We got, we have one donated.
Yeah.
What we found out is all things that are free is a great shell and there's no compressor. It was, it was stripped while it sat there empty. So we got a compressor, which I mean, a, a shell, which is probably worth five grand-ish, four grand. A, a, a big, nice cooler freezer is ten, fifteen thousand dollars. So they don't have to have that. When I got greedy with Tracy, she said, calm down. I'll try to get you the thirty-nine. So we could take thirty, depending on what the water situation, uh, is to us, we could buy those two things and, and get them in a cooler and freezer. Uh, they're very nice to have, but they're, they don't have them now. They don't even have anything close to that now. Uh, so that'll all be new and refreshed and done. From the outside looking in, I can, the only thing that you'll really notice big is the two front doors that are kind of weird will be combined into one big entrance. Uh, we have some folks, he left, I won't mention any names, but his initials are Buddy Lloyd, that maybe, maybe helping me with a, a drive-through up front that had to be taken off because that's outside exterior construction. That was crazy how much that cost. So we took that off. They don't have it now, but it would be nice if they did. So when they drop off folks, they'd be out of the weather. What, I, I don't, and I can get you the very specifics of what we took out, uh, to go along with my comments, but.
And I know it's a dumb question, but it is ADA compliant, right?
That, and, and the bigger thing, sorry, thank you. The other thing that we are getting is to change, th- those bathrooms were ADA, I call them. Ish, but they will be completely redone to be completely, uh, when I, when I say ADA, ADA with MAHG, you know, you know, they're ADA. So that's a big, another huge cost because that's concrete, cutting. I get all that's expensive, but it just drives me crazy that it's a. Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we don't mind having that. That's not, been trying to hide that or anything. We just, as we worked hard to get it down and, and Travis and Tracy both have been kind of looking at me going, are you, you really want to go out again? I'm like, yeah, I wanna, we're gonna go out until we get it, what it's gotta be.
The mayor's been a tireless champion for this project.
Yeah, thank you.
Doing everything he can constantly.
It's very dear, near, near. Daily, nightly. It's very dear to me, this project. And, and just for fun, if you know Lisa, that runs the thing over there. She stays on me pretty good and she wants to know what we lost too. And so when the people, when I went over to tell everybody, they were wanting to know and, but they were still, okay, we just went out. And no reflection, absolutely no reflection of disrespect on Farmers Bank. Farmers Bank, as my dad used to say in a commercial, has been very, very good to us. Uh, the lease we had was extent, absolutely great, but as you know, uh, they were not willing and they shouldn't have been to put money in it. But what we were constantly, uh, putting money, somebody suggested if you really wanna, to know what they're gonna be out of and into good, is to go there on a, on a summer day when the air conditioner has failed for the fifteenth time. And they're working in that kitchen and chief can attest, it's very, very dangerous. Uh, it's not fault of Farmers Bank. It was not built as a senior citizen center. It was built for a bank. So, uh, they're gonna make it their own. They've already talked about what things they're gonna take, what decorations they want. One day I was there and they said, you all been in there at some point in your life, probably. There's a mural that's on the wall. It was part of the bank and it's downtown Greenwood, Arkansas. She was serious. She said, what are you gonna do about this mural? I said, I don't know what to tell you. I can, we can take a picture of it and try to recreate it. Oh, I don't know, somebody that could paint. So there are things they're attached to, but they're, they're ready to go. Uh, it's, anyway.
Mayor, I was just wondering, why is the, uh, the fire suppression aspect of the project not included in the overall bid? It seems like that's what we'd require of anybody else that was coming up to us with a commercial project. Yeah, we would include.
Yeah, but it's not anybody else. It's us. I did not want that grant. I wanted that grant money to go everything that we could do to get to what we needed. I don't even know that was, that was gonna be allowed in that grant. And I don't, I don't, I don't know that it was. I'm looking at Hunter like he knows, but I don't know that it was.
We talked about that before. He said it was.
I have said all along that we, we would not be coming out of the grant, that we would, we, and, go back in minutes and see, uh, this is something that we would have to address. So let's just say it was. And let's just say we had to, I'm not planning on this, but let's just say, for whatever reason, we have to bore underneath a four lane highway. That could cost easily as much as this grant. So then we would be, we'd be nothing. We would have nothing. But I don't think it was even allowed. Uh, I mean, I'm not swearing to that, but.
Well, I would think that it would be allowed if it's part of a, of a, of a project, you know, you're saying that you, well, in order to have a, a, a commercial building, we would require a, any other person.
They didn't even care if it was, it was, it, I'm telling you, you, you're free to ask Tracy McKinnon of that. I don't know what the point of your question is, other than trying to stymie it.
You said that, you know, uh, just like, uh, you mentioned earlier, you know, any other project that, you know, uh, that we would require the same thing.
The road. I'm talking about a road, yeah.
And, you know, and so, uh, I think we should require the same thing for us if it's a commercial project.
We are gonna do it.
But we'd say for them, if it's a commercial, like we'd say, you have to provide the, the fire suppression.
We are gonna provide a fire suppression. We are going to.
The city is going to do that on top of this.
That's correct because it's our facility.
The, it is our facility, yes, but I thought this all was encompassing.
I never said that. I never said that. Let me, while you're on it, I would suggest, and I would ask all councilmen too, just, just for my sake. When you have questions about this project specifically, and I'm, it's very near to me. I would lo- love the opportunity to answer your questions in my office. Tom March is here for everybody and I admire Tom more than as much as anybody. I hired the man. But when you have these specific questions, it'd be nice if I heard him first before going to Tom and questioning him. He doesn't mind that, but I kind of do as the mayor.
I was saying, when, when you look and we talk about the value engineering, we don't know exactly what the changes have been made.
Do you need to know until the project's ready to go?
Sure.
My job is to get it down under the grant. That's my responsibility. We have a half a million dollar grant. My responsibility is to get it where I don't spend any more money because I made that promise to you.
That's the question, spend any more money? Cause to me, sometimes I'm concerned when we go from a one point million proposal down to a.
Four hundred and sixty-one.
One thousand.
You're not, you're as concerned as I am.
There's a potential for change orders.
There is, there has been. That's how it got down.
No, I've changed yours after we approved this and we started into the process. There's.
I will not be back to you to say I need more than five hundred thousand dollars. If I was gonna do that, I would have done it when it went out for eight hundred thousand dollars. I had, I could have stood here and asked you, give me allowance of another two hun- we applied, we had tried to get, we applied for another two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the grant. And they turned us down. That's a lot. We almost, we were asking for half the grant again. I will say, uh, that Tracy said if something happens to RMC and they're disqualified, the five eighteen, two oh three, she says, I can get that for you. And I just kind of looked at her and I said, I appreciate your enthusiasm, but you told me that about two fifty-two. I just feel like Mr. Brown at every step, there is someone trying to stop this project. And again, not, not coming to me to ask me those things. And you go to somebody else who has the answers, but not all of them. Tom doesn't know all, he's not been in any meetings with MAHG. He's got the numbers. My job as the mayor is to promise to you and the citizens and that crowd that was in here that night. We bought the building. We didn't use anybody's tax money. It's tax money, but it was ARPA money. Didn't take it out of the city coffers. As, and I know, half of you voted no, and I voted yes, so we bought it. Ever since then, it's been a fight in every corner. Every time I read a local paper, it's something against this project. And it's, I don't know what to say, other than I would appreciate, uh, the, the, uh, whatever it is to talk to you in person.
I was just saying again, if it's a, if it was another commercial project, you know, would we hold them to the same standard that we're holding ourselves with this one?
Yes, we would. And we're holding ourselves to it. That's why we're.
We would say that the fire suppression is something that, that we're going to add later.
No, because it's our building. You're talking about a contractor that shows up. Buddy Lloyd wants to build a subdivision. I'm not gonna tell Buddy that we're gonna pay for his water suppression. I would like to tell him we're gonna pay for some stuff because every other city in the state of Arkansas that can afford it, does those things. It's called incentives. And I'm not making that up. I, I have been elected the prep, next year's president of Arkansas Municipal League. I'm in touch with five hundred mayors. On it, I can call them anytime and they call me. I'm not the king. I'm not saying that. There are, there is so much that other cities do, podo. I've used them as an example. They buy land, they sell buildings, they put people in them. They get, they, they, they build up their community. And by building up their community, they're building up what he wants and we all need is sales tax revenue. And if you don't have the gumption to, and I'm getting off talk, topic a little bit, but if you don't have the, the foresight in the, in the, to see that you have to do. to see that you have to do that sometimes. I got fought on East Village. Mr. Lloyd left. He thanked everybody, as he should. That's a nice gesture. That was a big fight and that thing is going to be successful. I think there's about 25 more homes now there than there was when, that everybody said there would be. And we did a little bit of help. We helped them. We put water line out to, to tractor supply. Yeah, we got reimbursed. If we don't think that way toward ten, I'm glad I'm not going to be around because that'll be a disaster if we don't invest in that.
Like my right question.
Yes, sir.
So you're, we're talking about born underneath.
We're talking that as a.
But I'm just saying, when, when that was designed to go to five lane.
Ten.
Ten. So were the plans to come with water from town that direction or was it to use James Forks?
My thought all along was to use James Fork. I didn't realize there was a 10 inch line already over there, but my thought was to try to get James Fork on board with us. Because nobody may believe it, but it wasn't just for this center. I, I've been preaching from the center back into town for years. You know.
So we're mainly to having to drill under, bore underneath the highway anyway, right?
We could.
If, if we're going to get watered down.
If we're going to get the suppression that we need on ten, probably.
I just didn't know if the plans were to come from town with the 10 inch line that direction.
I'm not, well, we have, we have yet to have a sit down with Jeff. What's his last name? Jeff Piles at James Fork is willing to sit down and talk to us with all aspects of this. What can we do to help you? Uh, and I'm not saying they're volunteering their money or their, their, their resources. They just wanted, they want to know what we were going to need.
Because that other tranche of the ARPA money was reserved for.
That's right.
Water development down highway ten, correct?
I don't think, I don't think specific to, yeah. For the bypass.
Okay.
Okay. But to answer your question, I don't want to, I don't want to go around your question.
I just didn't know if it was coming, which, which direction.
I'm, I'm good with either way, whatever's most efficient and cost, uh, not prohibited.
But those are all James Fork water rights.
That's right. Yeah, that's correct. Right. Yeah. And, and for now, it is just for fire suppression.
Right.
Now, do you, do you put a line underneath the highway and then come back later and do another? No.
No.
Yeah, that, that would be ridiculous. Uh, so our conversation with, with James Fork will be, here's the big picture. Or as I see the big picture, talk to us about what, what we need to do or what's possible. Again, I'll go back to the pond.
Good luck holding water.
Well, and there's that. I mean, upon, you know, any, back in the day when I was a kid, somebody showed up at Baco or, or something and dug a pond in about two days. And you, there, there you go. I guess because we're smarter now, it doesn't work that way.
I think what you're going, what you're running to is what's on the other side of the road that they're blasting.
Yeah, exactly.
Probably right there too.
Correct. I, I have, I have yet to go to the Church of Christ to see if we can borrow their pond because I don't, I don't think they'd be very receptive, to be honest with you. Right, Chief?
No.
You know what? You know, and, and my, again, it may sound like I got the, the cart before the horse or the center before the water line. I couldn't concentrate on getting all that worked out until I knew we were going to be able to do this. And so there's where I'm at. But Mr. Brown, does that make sense that I would prefer that you ask me about some of this stuff? Because I'm, I'm the one leading the charge on this and you know that.
Yes.
And you're.
And I'm thinking this is the forum to ask.
I agree. Or my office instead of his. Just a thought. Okay. Uh, other update, store crafts, uh, city attorney has some interesting news for us. If you haven't heard it, it's very interesting. So hold on to your seats.
Uh, yes, so. So on September sixteenth, uh, the judge signed a default judgment of our foreclosure suit for store craft. In the meantime, since then, we have, um, set up a sale at the courthouse, uh, that will occur on October twenty second at two P M, uh, to essentially sell that property, um, satisfaction of the city's lien. So.
So a hallelujah moment?
Yes.
But still nervous because it is what it is. I, I've.
Signed by the judge.
Signed by the judge. So it's, it's official. I, I immediately, uh, receiving this news because I think, Mr. Plummer would say, he kept asking me how far I want to go. And I asked you guys how far you wanted to go. And we wanted to go far enough to get, this project off a high center and see what can happen. Uh, we have, I don't know, you just gave those details. We have a twenty, approximately 18,000. Did you say that?
Uh, seventeen thousand, four hundred dollar lien.
That's our lien that we be, should be reimbursed for mowing and tearing down the house on Denver, uh, which is part of this property. And then Mr. Plummer obviously has some legal fees. So I call it twenty. Yeah, there you go. I, I immediately called and I'll just, I'll be glad to say it in public because I think it's, it's worthwhile. John Van Gorder has been pursuing this facility for years, uh, to my, my knowledge, I know. And so I called him first and I said, John, believe it or not, and he did a lot of hallelujahs on the other end. I can't believe you did that. Can't believe you said the attorney managed to do that, but he did. To let him know of, of the availability of it, uh, I have no idea what all John would have in mind, but he has ideas. I called all other, over the years, I have personally, uh, been aware of and or been there when other companies have toured that building, Magnolia, I forgot what else out of Texas that does the Chip and Joanne, those folks. They didn't come, but those people came. They were interested in it. They went away after seeing the inside of it. Never heard back from them. It's pretty rough. Obviously, Mr. Plummer's been in touch with Mr., uh, Lewis many times. I have, uh, a couple of realtors have, and nobody can get him off a high center, but I think we've managed to do that on the twenty second. So if you want to buy a store craft building, be at the courthouse at two o'clock. I'm understanding from Mr. Plummer that it's, I, I envision Sean Looper out there selling it. Uh, it's not that. It's, uh, in the clerk's office. And they'll be open bid. And, but yeah, it could happen just like that. Uh, that building could go for 20,000 plus, obviously, or 10 million. I don't. Anything else?
Mr. Travis, does, so when our lien is satisfied of seventeen thousand, four hundred, the remainder goes to Mr. Lewis?
Correct.
Other than your, right?
Yeah, that too.
Other than his fees, yeah.
Which really aren't too bad. It was a default judgment. So.
So he really has no say in some of our sales for it then?
We have to say so.
Yeah, we did.
We get a ninety day credit bid. We can request a ninety day credit bid, uh, surety bond from the purchaser.
Okay.
So we, we have control of that. I'll be there too.
Okay.
But he could buy it back, right?
He? Yeah. I mean, to my knowledge. Let me, let me tell you what I've thought about, and I talked to enough people that if you hear from, about it on the street, I want you to hear it from me. I wasn't going to go into this, but I think it's, I think it's only fair that you know what I'm thinking sometimes. I approached some of the department heads a while back about what do you think? Just for the, just for the sake of thinking, if the city purchased that, we end up with that facility. Every piece of equipment, the water sewer own, the street department owns, we park it in that building, get it out of the weather. That's good for us, right? Freeze up this building. Just some things that, some growing pains that we have. That's all, that's a hundred and something thousand square feet. That's a lot of, and it needs a lot of work. But I said to them, what do you think about that? And some of them were like, huh, that sounds not, that sounds kind of interesting. And then I thought, I also knew as I was asking, that does absolutely nothing for the city of Greenwood as far as tax revenue. All we're doing is taking a building that doesn't look, I mean, it looks okay. We maintain it, but we utilize it and we, and we make it worth something. Again, no tax revenue, no jobs. So then I pondered with Ms. Derry and Mr., uh, Marsh, what if we bought it to be in control of the sale of it? Uh, only to say, we then get to choose who, who takes that facility. Are you going to put a manufacturing plant? Are you going to get 50 jobs? Is it going to be a warehouse? We are in control. Uh, Tom, it's like I went in the time before and asked him for five million dollars and he figured out a way to do it. He, he was open to that. We had a really good discussion about it. It was, it was a thought. Uh, but the more I thought about it and, and it's up to you guys, but I, I wanted to bring it to you. I don't want you to think I was hiding something from you. And you may be thinking immediately, that's the craziest thing I've ever heard. And it kind of is, but if we're in control, then we get, we, we put who we want in there. The, the last thing I want, under any circumstances, is for that building to be purchased and we are right back where we were. No one's using it. It's nothing. And it gets grown up. And here we got to keep Kyle on it to keep it mowed or we do it ourselves. Uh, I don't want that to happen. I would love for it to either one be a manufacturing facility and, and supply 50 to 100 jobs like it used to back in the day, or it's gone. And that's commercial development prime. World's largest Chick-fil-A. I don't know. Uh, so those thoughts ran through my mind. Sir? Buc-E's. Uh, I, I was at Sam's warehouse yesterday. I thought, man, that'd be awesome. But you know, Amazon was a, yeah. So I have reached out to many, many, uh, and which is kind of weird if, if you think about it. Here I am calling people to come bid on it. And if I had a consideration of us trying to bid too, but, uh, there's been some folks look at it already. Since it's been advertised, it's a, it's officially in the paper, Democrat Gazette, that it's.
That was last Sunday.
Last Sunday. Is that the only time?
Yes.
Okay. So it's going to be sold and unless I hell, I joked about this too. I keep expecting a helicopter to fly in with five suited guys and black glasses. Ask me what I think I'm doing with her, with this building, but we, we are confident that we followed every procedure that we need to do to get it to this point.
So let me ask Travis, I mean, so we put lanes on it. We, we caused foreclosed, take it to the bank or to the, to the courthouse to bid, and then we turn around and buy it. I mean, that's, that's legal. I mean.
We'll have a credit bid of seventeen thousand, four hundred dollars.
Yeah, it's actually our bid first.
Okay. I, I just didn't know. I mean, we caused it to go to sale and then we.
It all looks, I know. I was, I mean, it's the reason I was kind of like, yeah.
Okay. I just want to make sure that's.
I understand nobody came to sale, nobody bid on it. It's ours.
Well, I advise the mayor, he probably needs to go and place a bid of seventeen thousand, four hundred.
Yes.
If that's what he wants to do and, because we would have that amount available to us anyway, it wouldn't be a, any out of pocket expense for us if nobody else bid on it. But I'd, I'd be really shocked if, if it didn't go higher.
While we're using, while we're talking about Mr. Plummer, I'd like to approve his.
Do y'all want to, do y'all even need to do that approval?
I don't think we need to do it.
I don't think you do. I think you just wanted to see it every time.
Yeah, that's what we suggested.
That's what we decided on when y'all asked the ordinance. I asked that specifically.
Fresh to see him.
Okay.
Anyway, that's. We need to give the mayor authorization to make a minimum bid on that. Yeah.
I would think so, if he's going to make a minimum bid on property.
We've got a credit of that amount. So I don't know if that's like a net zero for him to bid that much, since we're owed that much.
I think we give a maximum bid.
But.
We're that.
City council's in charge of property, both personal and real.
Right.
Mayor can't give property away, can't acquire property without the council's approval.
Correct. So.
So we'll vote for the minimum bid. Just in case.
Are you putting that in?
It's not on the agenda, but you. Remember that old thing?
He's doing this October the twenty second. We don't have much time.
Nope.
You want to add it to the agenda, then?
I guess that would be the thing to.
I'd like to add it to the agenda.
Oh, that's right.
Okay.
Oh.
Yeah, we could.
You don't study?
We could have a thirty minute.
Have to have a special call meeting prior to.
Right before it.
You want to do that?
You want to do that instead?
So are we, are we giving him authorization for a minimum bid or a maximum bid or both?
Minimum, not a maximum. We wouldn't worry about no one.
Well.
And that was the other part of this.
Yeah.
If, if, if not if, when I ask you if you are, this is obviously public. Somebody's watching from California right now and I wouldn't blame them. But if I ask you in a public meeting, which I could not do otherwise, what's your consideration on us owning this? Kind of let the cat out of the bag.
We write it on a piece of paper and pass it down.
You can't.
I don't want it. I don't want to touch it.
Text it to us.
No, no.
It's on our phone.
I said, yeah, send it to my city email. Send it to my city email. Anyway, there's that. Yeah. So we'll put that on the agenda.
We'll, we'll, we're going to make that a special call meeting.
Special call meeting. I guess we can do that now.
Yeah, it starts at six. So do y'all want to do that at five thirty?
Five forty five.
Five forty five.
Five forty five, okay. We'll do that.
Uh, I was wanting to, uh, ask on, on the bypass.
Yes, sir.
We talked about mitigation possibilities, whatever. Is that anything, uh, that's.
Mitigation.
Uh, Ralph said that, that, uh, with anything that, uh.
Yeah, I think we, we had spoken, who was it that was here last time?
Oh, you were, this is something you had. Yeah, I had asked him about when they, when they crossed the creek there, whether or not they could mitigate that by cleaning it out and make it to where it was navigable, float canoes, whatever. And I didn't think that they were too receptive to that.
They weren't. I never got a call from anybody. Was that, I know you asked, was that in here? Or was that in another? I think you asked that in a co- conference. Yeah, you did. Yeah, I don't think they're too, yes, sir.
Under or not both paths, but I don't think that's, I don't think navigable is going to happen. I think there's a possi- possibility that they said too much, but I think there's a possibility that they might create like fishing area. But they've been pretty not committed.
Yeah.
That's a, that would still be a mitigation if they created a fishing area with, with that little, uh, the sort of.
Is there a point where they're going to want something from us?
R dot.
I'm just thinking it, I mean, there are also marine fuel tax monies that are available through R dot and, and a certain state agency. That we could probably apply for if we had the designs. And that would probably also help out with our city drainage as well. If it was designed properly.
I think if, if you're, you're not asking, but I think all that is well and good. And I think we should pursue it. I don't think R dot from the get go, R dot has been focused. This is what we're doing. If you want to do something later, come back and talk to the core.
Yeah.
Uh, and they don't like to mingle. I don't think too much. Now, obviously, if you've seen three bridges being built, they are doing what they want to in the creeks because there are not. And that's great. Otherwise they, and by the way, official, unofficial, official word is that's a little ahead of schedule. They've had perfect weather. Uh, so.
I'm sure it is. There was, there was no one was out there working.
I know. I, I was, I was like, what's happening here? I, I, I was worried. Danielle's always like, calm yourself down. I said, well, nobody's over there. And, and I drove all the way around to the other side and there were like three guys on that last bridge. But I was told the other day that I'm pretty sure that was a little ahead of schedule. Ironically, uh, I was in a meeting with, I was there, Congressman Womack. I walked over to him and he said, Doug, how's that project going? I said, it's going great. Thank you so much. Appreciate your, all that. And he goes, have they broken ground? What? I said, you were there for the groundbreaking. I know, but, uh.
They didn't break ground with the stoplight.
Oh, I knew that was coming.
With the, uh, the, again, how are the trails working with that? Are, are, are we having a, 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 on, on side of the bridge or?
We don't, you talking about where it crosses the track, where this main street crosses?
I guess though, maybe the kind of, I'm thinking about.
The whole thing.
Connectivity to, you know, like Greenwood.
The initial plans I saw were, was a sidewalk and or, or 10 foot, whatever it was, Hunter probably knows better than me now, was from here along the highway to the, to the bridge that they will replace by commerce property. You know, both of these bridges are going to be replaced. And then some, and then it goes. And then some, and then it goes under. And then it's up, and then it, and then it picks up again on the new highway. And as you know, we have a, is this right, five and, five on one side, ten on the other, all the way to seventy-one from there? So if that answers your question. Now, the crossing of Main Street extension across the trail is yet to be determined. Uh, we have a bridge that we're setting over there, it's another bridge, I know y'all excited, that we possibly could use. We're, I haven't gotten through to, Jared Wiley's the main man here on this project or in Little Rock. So he's still, we, we conversed back and forth on what's that gonna look like? Is that gonna be a tunnel or are we gonna try to go? Yeah, tunnel, I guess, or, or a bridge over the top, so I don't know what that's gonna look like.
So I, that's why I was wondering, is pedestrian crossings, I guess, trail related, you know, across the creeks, you know?
Yeah.
Are they gonna be on the bridges that they're gonna replace over here next to us? Are they gonna be part of the, uh?
I think they're gonna go, I think they're gonna go down underneath, just like this one does.
He's wondering how we're gonna get from existing trail per se out to Greenwood Lake, where's the master plan?
So that comes under.
Across a bridge.
A layer plan.
I mean, I can see it goes under a ridge, but how's it getting?
Well, we don't have, we, the master plan may show it. But let's just say the bridge, the, the first bridge down here at ninety-six, to my understanding, that's gonna go from this side of ten or ten spur, I guess, over there and somehow meander underneath that bridge and then just be pointing toward the, the lake. We don't have any specifics, do we, Casey?
I mean, there was a master trail plan years ago made up, I don't know where it's at or I'm sure we vary.
We got it. I just.
Any, any part line bypass?
Yeah, 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 because if you remember one time it was gonna go, uh, way.
Or some, we were taking out cokers on them back into the lake at one point, wasn't it?
Yeah. So there is the plan and the thought and the want to and the desire to get it to the lake, it's just not, I don't, it may be on paper from years ago, but.
Well, I mean, I know, like I said, over there under Denver, we, we're able to get a, uh, but, you know, it pops up and, you know, we have other places where we can cross, uh, the creek, you know, but I'm thinking between, I guess, here or even right here where the trail is, to get it across the creeks. You know, I was wondering, what's the process to get across the creek, you know?
I'm kind of, I'm kind of set back going, I'm thankful for the bypass, and when they get to, we'll figure it out. And, and I know that seems a little bit, well, if you had a plan while they're building a bypass, would they do it? I, I think we're, I don't know.
Because that's the, that's the thing we encountered, like they're right there at, uh, Walgreens, saying, oh, they won't let us attach to the bridge because of that labor aspect of the bridge, you know?
We're actually.
No way to get it really across the creek.
Well, so on that note, R dot's plans are, Hunter, make sure I'm saying this right. The bridge by La Fiesta, as it stands, that bridge is not to be replaced, that's gonna remain. But the thought process, if I may, tell me real quick, if I'm wrong, is to narrow that lane and actually have a, just like they walk across this one?
Yeah.
They would have a, they would, now they would raise it to a, I don't know, four inch? An elevator, and, and a, and a fence, if you will, a rail. So we will get across that creek, uh, to, because that sidewalk that ends at Dr. Singer's office, phase two, as you know, is coming all the way to Bass Street. So now, we're gonna.
When are they gonna start that?
Yeah.
So as we have, okay, Thursday, that date, you ready for this one?
Yeah. Yeah.
So phase two of that project, Hunter's been in charge of those, those easements. And, uh, he's working hard, but we have our holdout, as we always do.
Who's the holdout?
I knew you'd ask.
Which church?
It's the owner of, no, it's the owner of, not the men that run it, it's the owner of Bulldog Auto, who lives in Oklahoma. And so we are now getting ready to bargain with him as we did Taco Bell and the Morlocks. Uh, I don't want to spend twenty-five hundred dollars for appraisal, because that's how much it is. We did spend that on the other properties I mentioned in phase one. But so what we're gonna use is the, that, that appraisal based on that cost that we paid per square, you got it? What is that? We're gonna, this is gonna be an offer.
The offer we make him is, or we're gonna make him is five thousand three hundred ninety-one dollars and forty-eight cents, which is the same price per square foot that we paid on the Morlock properties.
And Morlocks finally turned ugly, we had to go to Dallas and go after him, right?
Yeah, we did a lot of stuff, and then we finally, finally worked out, but Sonny just kind of whispered it back there. You know, the most aggravating part of this? That's not even to put a, to cut asphalt, put a sidewalk, that's just to paint a stripe on his parking lot.
Well, it's just, it's for the easement.
I know, but. But the plan to, it is for the easement, I'm sorry. But our architect's plan, or not architect, our design is to not disrupt his.
Yes.
Brand new asphalt and just stripe it. I just, it makes me sick to my stomach. Uh, he's our one guy. That's, uh, until we get that settled, uh, we don't get to proceed, just like we couldn't with the other phase.
Is he an ex-Greenwood guy or does that have to be in the order?
He's a Oklahoma guy. Uh, I don't know where he lives, but he's in Oklahoma, he's in Oklahoma.
Is he, who?
I just wonder why he got that, how he got that property?
No, that wasn't GK's.
I, no, no.
No, no, it wasn't GK's.
That was the old, yeah, that was an old grocery store.
Okay.
I don't know how he got it, but it's his.
GK's was the transmission.
Jeremiah Roberts.
That's where.
That's correct.
Yeah.
I was, I was mad at some Shears boys when I first heard it, and I said, well, they don't own it. And I didn't know they didn't own it.
So.
That's aggravating.
Back up, right behind Masonic Lodge, how are people?
Gonna cross?
Cross.
That's what I was talking about a while ago, that is yet to be determined by us and or R dot. R dot is listening to our suggestions. We indeed have a bridge that was on the Frog Valley up in Alma. We've got it sitting over there, it was hall complete. We know those things can turn into major cost, uh, but it is complete and we could use it that way. That would, that would require us to build approaches. I got two hands up.
Currently, right now, the trail is elevated to the new.
Highway, yep.
With signalized crossing.
Yeah, as far as the plant.
So right, so right now, if I cross Denver, you go underneath and you're safe. But if I go across Maine, which will be a lot busier, your life will be in your own hands, right there, there.
The type of signalization is a little more advanced, it's, it's all signals that you see in the Bayville.
Yeah.
Where it takes some education, but once people understand that signal, they stop.
And that was the initial agreement, I guess, if you will, with us and R dot, that that's what they're gonna apply. I forgot that that was in there, that that's what they would design, and if we wanted something different, to let them know on us.
They have one up there on Ranger Backwater, I went through Saturday.
Oh, wow.
Right, somebody, they're approaching it or had to push a button or whatever it is, it'll, literally a trapping signal will stop right. Well, I, which I don't mind one there, because I'll never.
I always liked the option where nobody dies.
Well, that would be nice, I don't know that we had, I don't know if you have that luxury though.
With this option, if you die, well, we save some money, so.
I would like to look at the option at the time. Well, the highway's already gonna have to be elevated.
I would really bet we never kill anybody on Denver, walking that trail. But we may kill somebody down here.
Unless they get washed away, but, yeah.
And that's a busier street than Denver, Denver is.
But we weren't gonna not have a bypass due to that.
I think you still have a bypass anyway, I mean, just, we gotta deal with that traffic right there, which is pedestrian.
That's part of having, having that, you have to figure out what's the best way and safest scenario. No one, no one here wants anybody killed at a, at a trail crossing. I promise you.
Right. We have had traffic on the, uh, underneath the Denver Creek.
Sir? We have had traffic.
That traffic?
No, a certain architect's wife drove under it once. And Sturt and I tracked down the car with an older couple, and it went all the way back to the Oaks. Remember that?
They went down Denver too, because I was coming up the hill and it's like about run over me.
Yeah, they went under that, they sure did.
She was in a black Jeep Cherokee.
So it could happen.
We've had that big burrito down there.
So when, whenever they gonna start taking Masonic Lodge building?
I do not know, Buddy could probably answer that a lot better than I could, he's gone. I'm sorry, Tim.
We'll vote Thursday night on, hopefully, the plans that are.
Okay.